And welcome to the August 31st City Council meeting. Typically, this meeting is a work session and it will be a work session. But we had some business that we needed to take care of before the end of the month, so we will also call it to order as a regular meeting. Have a short agenda, hopefully, and then we'll get into some of the presentations for the work session. But we are going to start this meeting as we start all our meetings, and that's by invoking God's presence. And I'd like to invite to the podium Reverend Danny Diethe from First Presbyterian Church of Columbus. Reverend Diethe, thank you for being with us on this rainy Tuesday morning, sir.
Thank you for the invitation and good morning. It's been a good morning so far. I was up early, got dressed, got here on time, beat my way through the tagline that extends into the garage. Got here early and then coming in the back, I could see the back of my head. I don't know how many times we look at the back and I saw the vast hairless wasteland that is the back of my head. I thought, my goodness, how old is that guy? I'm gonna have to get a city council praying toupee for the next time I come. Anyway, thank you for coming. I am the pastor at First Presbyterian Church downtown 1st and 11th. Y'all come by anytime. Love to have you. I'm wearing a Tabasco tie today to remember our family and friends in Louisiana and those in the corridor have been, are, and will be of Hurricane Ida. So please join me in prayer. Lord God, we take a second to breathe. It is the start of another day. And while it seems a bit gloomy outside in here, the lights are on. Our hearts and our spirits are ready. We take just a second to pray for those who are in need today, from the fires in the west to those dealing with floods and wind and rain today. We pray for our Afghanistan situation officially ending today, but yet still so much more is needed. Lord, I thank you for this council, for those gathered in this space. For you have filled them with the gift of service, of passion. And Lord, we pray today for joy. For their job is a hard one. Those who stand up to be seen and counted to lead the people often take just a lot of heat. They are honored and they are dishonored. They are celebrated and they are criticized for conversations had and conversations not had, for decisions made and decisions not made. But help them to know that we need them, we love them as you do, and we appreciate everything that they do to seek to serve your people. Wherever they are in their faith journey, Lord, or none at all, help them to know that you love them and that your presence is here. Help them to see you today, great God, in the words, the faces of one another, those who have come to speak, and the work to be done. It's not just an agenda on paper, but all of this makes a difference. So give them what they need. Help them to laugh. Help them to be focused. And let them know that your spirit is in this place. For it is in Christ's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Danny, thank you so much. And please thank your congregation for sharing you with us. And we appreciate everything that y'all do. We were talking just before I know the meeting started about how difficult this pandemic has been on churches. The central focus of community throughout this larger community. And I don't think the pastors and the preachers and the reverends and the priests and the imams have gotten enough credit for the extra work that you have gone through to hold your congregation together, try to keep hope going, and at the same time, trying to keep your flock safe.
Well, thank you, and for y'all as well.
Well, we thank you as a representative of all those that lead congregations throughout our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, hopefully, councilors, you have had an opportunity to review the minutes. If you... Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counsel Tucker. Any edits or any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say... Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Thomas?
Madam Clerk, was that correction that I sent to you... Did we get that? You had Ms. Huff going off the Board of Water Commissioners and it wasn't Ms. Huff, it was Mr. Griffin.
Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Counselor Thomas. Yes, that correction was made and the revised minutes were uploaded.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, good. Thank you. Any other comments or edits? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Quickly, an update on COVID. We've been picking up the pace, I think, on what we're trying to do in terms of notifying the public and trying to hit a little bit of an update every week. The numbers continue to go up. We had plateaued, but we saw a little bit of a jump in the cases per 100,000 individuals over a 14-day period. We're up a little over 800 now for that number. Our hospitalization rate continues to climb slowly. We had plateaued there as well, but we've seen another little push. We're up to about 190 individuals in our hospitals. That's total in all of our hospitals. Anecdotally, I'll tell you that people I talk to, whether it's first responders or nurses or just loved ones of people in this hospital, the age is going down. The age is getting... They're getting younger and their symptoms more severe. You're seeing younger folks on ventilators. There is not so much a crunch right now for our hospitals on room availability, but there is on people. You probably saw the governor, he just called up some more of the National Guard and we have... Our hospitals have requested more personnel to be able to stand up more beds. Because the challenge is not just, as we've mentioned, it's not just those that have COVID. The challenge is those that have non-COVID medical needs who also need to get into the hospital and get in there safely so that they're not going to end up contracting COVID while they're there. We continue to urge the people of this community that if you have not been vaccinated, to reach out to your physician. If you don't have a physician, reach out to the Health Department. Reach out to a medical professional, not a government official. Reach out to the person that you trust now to prescribe drugs and medication for your loved ones. You do that now. So I urge you to just check with them. Find out what they have to say about the likelihood that the vaccine will help you and help those that you love. Those that cannot vaccinate, we urge you to use a mask that will keep you safe and others around you. The same rules still apply. We're still asking people to socially distance. We're still asking people to beware their hygiene, wash their hands multiple times a day. And we're certainly strongly urging people to wear masks indoors. Masks are still required inside government buildings. So if you go into one of the local government offices, you're going to be asked to continue to wear a mask. But anyway, that's sort of a snapshot. The vaccinations have gone up a little bit. We actually had a pop-up vaccination site at St. Francis Hospital out in their parking lot, and they were vaccinating probably 100 folks a day out there over about a three-day period. And it's a great opportunity for those that are visiting, loved ones who might be hospitalized with COVID, now that they realize that this can strike anybody. Some of those folks have elected to go and get vaccinated. So I urge you, check with your doctor and prayerfully consider whether or not the vaccine is right for you. All right, and we'll move to the city attorney's agenda. Mr. Fay?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. We have a fairly short business agenda to get through, but the first item up was the ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance for Transfer Station, various fines and penalties. I think the Mayor Pro Tem wants to substitute two ordinances for the one ordinance that's on the table. One would deal with the transfer station issue, and the second substitute ordinance would deal with the fines and penalties for soil erosion. Mayor Pro Tem, you can have the floor.
We have some comments from the city manager real quick. I think.
Mayor and counsel, I'd like to ask if you will indulge me and the staff by delaying this matter until the next meeting. There's some additional discussion we'd like to have between ourselves and then with you.
All right, there's a motion to delay for, I guess, two weeks.
Yes, two weeks.
Made by Counsel Tucker, and it was seconded... Who did I hear seconded? Counsel Woodson. Any discussion? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask counsel if we would... Do you want to delay the whole ordinance or do you want to pull out four and five?
You can delay just that one.
Well, I just want to delay the one related to the property on Veterans Parkway, that piece of it.
With that in mind, fellow councilors, the request from city manager deals with one, two, and three. So we could go ahead and approve four and five, which are soil erosion and, I believe, fees and fines regarding... I'm sorry, soil erosion and...
You have a second substitute around the table, deals with soil erosion penalties, and the catch-all zoning of SFR2.
Right. When the city sells property, it goes to a classification of SFR2.
All right, so the motion from Counsel Tucker and seconded by Counsel Woodson was to delay simply the special exception request in LMI as well as HMI. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we can go ahead and deal with that specific delay now, which would just affect that one change in the UDO. Correct? Counselor Davis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think what I just heard you say is the two items we're talking about, one, two, three, is a totally separate issue from four and five. And, you know, and I think the last meeting, it was a little confusing that they were brought together, but the fact of it is, they are separate issues that we're dealing with. Am I right on that, correct?
Right. But just all... They were all put in one...
Well, I'll second the motion.
Okay. All right, so is there any more discussion as to delaying that one specific item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, let's be sure we know what we're voting on. I'm not sure that I know exactly what we're... Would you tell us what the motion is?
The motion, I think, is, if I understood it correctly, is...
Well, Mayor, let me restate it. The motion technically needs to be, put substitute number one on the table in place of what's there related to the transfer station, and then delay the substitute one dealing only with the transfer station until September 14th.
So two separate motions, two separate votes. One to separate that out and deal with it individually.
And it'll come back on second reading if that's what counsel desires, the transfer station.
Okay. So we'll need a substitute motion to separate out that one section, just on the transfer station.
Well, I combined it. It's a substitute for the transfer station and delay the transfer station for two weeks.
Okay. So there, Reverend Counsel, is that your wish to roll both of those motions into one? To separate it out and to delay of two weeks?
No, roll it all into one.
Okay. All right. To that motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that one has been split.
Okay, the transfer station ordinance substitute one piece will come back on second reading in two weeks. Now we need a motion to substitute the soil erosion and the SFR2 zoning piece. Get that on the table today.
So moved.
Motion from the Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counsel House. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. And now that it's on the table, it's on second reading, and you can go ahead and take a vote on the substitute number two, the second part.
So moved.
All right, motion to approve from the Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counsel House. Any discussion as to the approval of those items? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are passed.
Okay. Thank you. The second item up for a zoning hearing, this is ready for a vote, Buonavista Road and North Linden Drive.
Motion approved from the Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counsel House. Any discussion? Hearing none. If you could cue that, councilors, please register your votes. Okay? That's approved.
All right, that passes. Next item, Mayor, up for discussion, a resolution reimposing a local public health state of emergency in Columbus will allow virtual meetings for city boards, commissions, and authorities. It would also confirm the mayor's...
All right, I missed who made the motion. Counselor Thomas? Did you make that?
Over there.
This plexiglass is killing my deaf ears. All right, motion approved from Counsel Tucker, second from Counsel Woodson. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. We'll cue it. Please enter your votes. All right, and that's approved. We'll thank counsel. That'll allow some of our boards and commissions, including the Charter Review Commission, to continue to have the option of meeting virtually.
All right, looks like...
Counsel Crabbe?
That's okay.
Okay.
Looks like that passed by an eight-to-one vote. All right. And then, Mayor, the next item we have is an add-on resolution. Everybody should have a copy. This will allow the closure of Carver Park by the city manager on weekends only for a period of 30 days, and that's ready for discussion.
Okay. And I think I spoke with the... Well, I'll let Counsel Tucker.
This ordinance for Carver Park being closed... Sorry, resolution for Carver Park to be closed is on Saturday and Sundays, and it's just for 30 days to allow us to study public safety concerns in the park. And also, we're going to work with the city attorney to put an ordinance together to allow the city manager to work with the Public Safety Director on an ordinance that will give the city manager the flexibility to make these changes when need be, and not just for Carver Park, but for all parks. So this is just a 30-day resolution until we can address the public safety concerns in that community. And I want people to be aware, in February, I brought forth a resolution to change the hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. because a 16-year-old was murdered at Carver Park. And here, again, two weeks ago, a 44-year-old was murdered in the park, and a three-year-old was shot in the park. And it's constant shootings in the park on a daily basis almost. So we have to address the concerns, the public safety concerns, not for just the city of Columbus, but definitely for those house homeowners that live on the outskirts of that property. It's very unsafe. We need to ensure the cameras are working. One of the things that the community has asked me to do is to make that just a one-way in, one-way out, to close the back entrance of that park, because what's happening when law enforcement comes out and they're trying to, you know, apprehend suspects, they're going into the neighborhoods, and it's dangerous. It's dangerous. So I just hope that you all will support these changes for the public safety of our citizens in that district.
All right. And I believe that... Counsel Woodson?
Yes, I wanted to ask the question, and that would there be signage there or would there be a police officer or a park ranger, someone there to deter people that come into the park on Saturdays and Sundays? And make sure the gate's locked?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure there was a gate, because, you know, we're doing this resolution for a good reason, but we got to make sure we have the enforcement to enforce it, because you have individuals that will go, you know, and even if it's a gate, they can always go in. So I'm just concerned about if this is your intent, then we need to ensure that it is done correctly, where you can fulfill your need for your constituents.
That's right. And what I did, I think on Monday, I sent the email and I cursed a copy of all of the councilors. And what I'm asking our police chief is to have the beat cop go around that park more frequently during the weekend hours. Hopefully, they can go at least two or three times just to check, because I do know that people go around that gate because they're using the ATVs. But the gates will be locked. We... I appreciate you all voting on that to put the gates up. So we now have a gated entrance and on the opposite side. So it will be locked.
Just want to make sure that you fulfill what you're trying to do.
And that's the reason why the cameras are important as well, because if we have cameras and it's facing that gate, we can capture, you know, what's going on. So we got to get the cameras up and working.
Well, and I think it's a good measured response, because this is simply to give us time to bring an amendment to an ordinance that would allow the city manager to take a look at all that information, because we don't want to close public parks. So, but for 30 days until we get this ordinance amended, give them the authority to work with the Public Safety Director, with counsel, and with the law enforcement agencies, then maybe the modification based on certain circumstances. So I think that'll be fine. Counselor Thomas?
Are there gates there now, physically there? And who would be responsible for locking those gates and unlocking those gates the next day?
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, our Parks and Rec director, Holly Browder, along with her Maintenance Division, they have been and will continue to work with law enforcement to deal with locking and unlocking gates.
And I know we have some of our law enforcement folks in the audience. I wonder if any of them have any comments about what this would do or would not do? I don't know.
Chief, chief is back there.
Chief, we don't want to cause more problems than we solve.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, city manager, and council members. Regarding Carver Park, currently, I've been working with Holly Browder, our Parks and Rec director, since the beginning of this year. We've been locking the gate at the gates at Carver Park, and we will continue to do so. And of course, her staff, someone from her staff is unlocking the gate in the morning time. And so this would not present a problem for us, because we are currently taking care of that now.
Okay.
Counsel Tucker?
You seem to think that this will assist in some of the activities in the park that may not be what we want?
Of course, that's the intention as far as locking the gates. We'll continue to assess our reports of incidents over the past years and be able to review that and to determine, of course, the best option to take going forward from there. But as far as the immediate time, that would be the best route to take at this time.
I will say that the parks were, and all of our parks are open from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And when we did close, amend those hours for Carver Park for 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., the complaints, you know, the calls were decreased. I will say that. And a lot of the residents called me that lived around Carver Park and said it did help with the time being, you know, changed to closing at 7:00 p.m. But I do want to request something more permanent to, you know, do that one-way in, just that one entrance, so we can actually close that back gate, because that's where the 16-year-old that was murdered was on the back gate. It was another teenager that was shot. It was on that back gate. Most of the stuff happened on that back gate.
And I think, given the city manager amending the ordinance, giving the city manager the opportunity to work with law enforcement, Parks and Rec, council, we can be a little bit more responsive, a little quicker to try to, if that's the course of action to take, take that.
And it was one more thing in reference to the cameras. Myself and Counselor House, I'm trying to see if it was in February, John, when we did that walk-through. It was mentioned by Command Sergeant Grant that the cameras could be hooked up to the precinct on Buonavista Road, but it was a software that needed to be purchased, and I was trying to figure out what the price, and I forgot to add that in the email that I sent on Monday, what the price is for that software feature.
Well, I think I reported at the last meeting that Deputy City Manager Goodwin...
I know.
Well, in any and everything related to cameras, we'll go through that group. We are looking at a comprehensive camera system. As I read the email to you, the report out from Deputy City Manager Goodwin's initial meeting with all parties, and we've got police and all the public safety in on that. And so whoever you talk to, if they would make sure that the chief knows and when... And whoever is on the committee from police, we want it to be comprehensive, to include, I mean, if there's software, we've got IT involved, and we're going to fund it. And so we're looking at a comprehensive system.
That was Command Sergeant Grant, DeShawn Grant, and Sergeant Angela Florence that did that walk-through with us. And that's when we found out about that camera in the software feature. However, I know that we're doing a comprehensive plan. I'm not sure what the timeframe is in reference to that being actually put out for us to actually use. I'm saying we need to expedite, because this has been a while that we have talked about this, and we need those cameras out.
Right. So we have one of our assistant chiefs, Assistant Chief of Administration, Deborah Kennedy. She's on that committee with Deputy Chief Good... Excuse me, Deputy City Manager Goodwin.
What?
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
And she's part of that committee representing our police department. And so as the city manager stated, she'll be working to help contribute ideas and thoughts as well that would benefit our police department towards that comprehensive plan.
And let me just say that I understand, we understand the urgency of it, and, you know, it's a big project. It's a big deal, and it's not something we're going to turn on a damn. But we're working on it and we're going to get it right. And what I shared with you the last time, I'll just say it again for those who are watching who did not hear it the last time. But that committee has been meeting, and they have looked at the actual needs to ensure that we have the most up-to-date technology and ensure full integration of all systems. We will engage Adaptusall, Inc., the vendor that is currently on contract, to meet with us and advise us on what we will need to get to 5G small cell deployment. to meet with us and advise us on what we will need to get to 5G small cell deployment, ensuring we don't have any Wi-Fi blind spots, ability for all cameras to integrate, old and new. And there may be some cameras that will not need to be replaced, just infrastructure needed to navigate the integration. And so what the committee really want to see is 360-degree cameras, tag reading capability, particularly at entrance ways, cameras in high dumping areas that we've talked about, cameras for public safety crime hotspot areas, ability for public safety to have network access to view camera footage. We need to have one vendor and one same software for all, VPN access to be able to view on cellphones, iPads. And so this is just kind of highlights of what we are working toward. And you can see that it's public safety, it's public transit, it's sheriff. When I say public safety, it's a 360. And so you can see that this is not going to just happen overnight, but we're working on it and we're going to fund it. We're going to get there. But and so, but that is not to say that, for the criminals who are listening, that is not to say that we will not have portable cameras that may be in Carver Park, in other parks, in other places. Because the one thing that we will not do is let criminals shut down our parks.
That's right.
And so, you know, it may take us some time to get to this, but we will have some early efforts going to mitigate criminal activity and what we have witnessed at Carver Park. So the criminals know we're working.
And what I would ask for is a timeline for the cameras.
Well.
And I'm saying as an IT, former IT person and a project manager, just wanting to see what the timeline with the project because you can forecast, you know, how long you would think this project would take.
Let me just say, I will give you the best timeline I have, but we have IT experts and IT consultants. And that's who we're going to rely on. And we will give you the best timeline we can give you, but I want you to know that we're working.
I know you. I honestly know you are. We just want to see that way. When I have people calling me, asking me, well, what are we doing? I want to be able to say, this is what we're working on. We're working on a project. We're doing cameras. Because I just got off the phone with somebody that live over here off Ilges Road that's complaining about dumping and crime. I want to be able to tell a constituent or a citizen, this is what we're working on. And this is, you know, a projected timeline.
Yeah, that's why I'm reporting this. And I read it last week and I'm reading it again. I will give you the best timeline, but it's going to be not as specific as you want it to be. Because if I give you a timeline, you're going to hold me to it. And we are, some things are fluid and we're not, that the pandemic, you can't order doors and windows and cameras and things because we're in a pandemic. They're on backwater, you know? You can't order appliances. And so I can give you a general timeline, but I don't want to give you something that you are going to hold me to and staff to, and the public will hold you to. And so I want to be careful with that.
Let's come back with a general timeline. Let's come back because I know we see the same thing. I know when I talk and we'll hear from our fire chief when we talk about ordering some of these things, the window has gotten much broader. But we can give that broad window. And then as the, as things start, the swelling starts to go down and some of the procurement situations, we'll modify it. But we'll give a worst case. I know.
I can give you something, but, but just.
I know.
I've been down that road too many times where I give you a timeline, like with the animal control thing. And then staff get beat down. And so I'm just saying, I will give you very general and footnote that it's fluid. Because
That'll work.
You can't order anything right now. I mean, you just can't.
All right. We'll, we'll, we'll get a very broad, general timeline, but just so that we have something that we can help people. Because we, we should be able to communicate something to them. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I understand my colleagues' concern about a deadline, but I also been here long enough to understand what Isaiah says. And for those that've been here longer, you know, when we say it's an estimate, the constituent makes it its reality. But what I would, what I would suggest is that why don't you periodically update us on where we are? Are we getting closer to that timeframe? How much more estimated time you think it will be before we complete it? For instance, let's say by January, possibility, that's it, no exact dates, no, because the constituents, believe me, will stick to that. They won't remember that it was an estimated time. You said. So if we can just give updates periodically or give us a general timeframe, you know, February, January, you know, December, November, something, yeah, something that we can, can be able to explain to our constituents that's coming. Because it's not only Carver Park, it's all the parks, all the neighborhoods, all the community. And we don't want to continue to split up our community by saying, well, you were doing this, but we're not doing this for this other community. So just a quarterly update or something so that we know where we're at.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
City Manager, I just have a question. I know we talked about law enforcement, but, you know, just from a standpoint of the charter and responsibilities when it comes to law enforcement, I know that the sheriff's office controls are supposed to provide security and coverage and oversight of all government facilities. And I'm assuming that the parks and other matters are involved in that, too. I know CPD has their responsibilities. They got patrols out and certainly they probably work together. But, you know, as far as whose responsibility is that, could you answer that to me?
Sure.
For me?
Of course. We all know that police respond to nine-one-one calls. And I want to say that this sheriff, Sheriff Greg Hunchman, understands his responsibility for government buildings and facilities. And he came into office and he took that on in a way that I've never seen a sheriff take it on before. And so he knows that he has a responsibility for parks and facilities. This sheriff has people riding buses, you know, deputy sheriffs in all the buildings when you enter. So he knows that parks are his responsibility. And I think he has people patrolling parks and going through parks.
So and the citizens, I guess I'm just asking this question for the sake of the citizens. And I know the pressure and the stress related to patrols with CPD. But when we say law enforcement, that's really how it's working. They're working together.
They're working together.
Sheriff's Office, CPD, patrols, everybody working together on it. But the responsibility lies with the, by charter with the sheriff's office.
That's right. And the sheriff's office, like at Cooper Creek and other places, they open gates and close gates and monitor in parks. But I just wanted to say that because we've never had, in my time, sheriff deputies riding buses. I mean, they're doing it.
Well, we've, we've never had or needed the collaboration between our law enforcement agencies like right now. And you'll hear from the chief in a little while about staffing. And it's, it's, it's another pandemic. It's across the country with law enforcement, even with people in waitstaff. But specifically, it's a problem for our CPD who are going above and beyond out there trying to cover patrols. And the sheriff's folks have, have helped, not so much supplement that, but they've helped in some other areas to allow the CPD to continue to do such a great job.
Yeah.
Under such direction.
And Mayor, we've had conversations in the past. I think once upon a time, we did have park patrols, park rangers.
We did.
Policing in our parks. I guess due to budgetary constraints over the years, it kind of, we've had to make some readjustments or the cities had to make some readjustments. But maybe, I don't, I don't know if we're there at that point. But maybe that's a conversation we ought to have again about having specific patrols or maybe some kind of a unit that, that, you know, not cover every park, but maybe being able to get out there and just put eyes on the, eyes on the ground. I know cameras and all that is good. It's, it's important, but a presence is important as well. So I don't know. I'm just.
No, I agree. But I think what you're gonna, what you're gonna find is that, I mean, if we could hire park rangers, I'm okay with hiring them. The challenge is we've got a lot of holes to fill in the police department. And we cannot hire people. It's, you know, it's a combination of the rigors of the job and some of the challenges that we've seen occur around the country over the last two years. Not many people want to be in law enforcement. And it's getting tougher and tougher every day. So, yeah, I mean, if we could, we can find them, they want a job, I bet you the chief will work with them.
Yeah, and look, I concur. We in full agreement there. I don't, maybe there's some folks that might want to come back to work, retire, they want something to do, they need some, some way to spend their time. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but.
We, no, those are good ideas.
I don't look at them more as patrol officers with CPD, but I do agree with you.
Those are good ideas. And we've talked about almost all of those. There's challenges though. All right? All right, there's a motion by Counselor Woodson to approve the resolution, second from. I'm sorry? Oh, they had already done that? Okay, I thought that's what we were doing. So we've got the second. All right, motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, it's approved.
Hey, that passes. Mayor, the last item of business, we would ask for a short executive session on acquisition and disposal of real estate and discussion of potential litigation.
Okay.
And that's, that's our agenda.
All right, thank you. And before we get out of here, I wanted to make, make a comment. We misread one of the numbers and that's why I was a little bit surprised. Our, our number per 100,000 has actually gone down. It's 649, not the 812. That was actually the number for, for the state. So we are still plateaued. We're not going up as much as we thought in COVID. But just wanted to correct that number. All right. Public agenda. First up is Mr. Jerome Lawson. Mr. Lawson here? Okay. Next is Ms. Catherine Dillard regarding the nondiscrimination ordinance. Okay, well, next is you, Mr. Jeremy Hobbs, representing Colgate Pride regarding the nondiscrimination ordinance. Welcome. And what we'll do is, is you get five minutes and we'll start the timer after you give your name and address. And then if you are unable to finish, you can come back at the end of the work session for three more minutes.
My name is Jeremy Hobbs. I reside at 1717 42nd Street in Columbus, Georgia. And today I'm here to talk to our council members about our, oh my gosh, our nondiscrimination ordinance. You know, there's 12 cities, 12 other cities in the state of Georgia that have already passed this. Columbus, Georgia is the third largest city in Georgia. It used to be second. Well.
No, we are second.
We keep hearing the second or third or whichever. But a lot of people in Atlanta want to say it's third. But if we're second, that's great. But to be the second largest city, we should have already passed this a long time ago. There are so many people out there. Let me just tell you about my story. I've worked with Taco Bell, Takala. I've worked with Spectrum Stores. And I've also worked with Carmike Cinemas. All three of those at one time discriminated against me. Two were because I was LGBT, okay? And one was because I had AIDS. Discrimination exists today everywhere. They say, oh, we already have policy. Policy does not protect people. It's just a piece of, it's a piece of paper. It's words. Law does. When we have fines, punish people for these acts, that goes a lot further, knowing that they cannot continue to discriminate against people for whatever reasons. Women, at one time, would not hold these positions of power, would not be able to stand up and speak out. They fought hard. They fought oppression. They fought for the right to vote. And look at where we are today. I see so many women in power that are able to stand up and speak out and help others speak out as well. I also see African Americans that were oppressed, held back, kept from positions of power, kept from employment, kept from jobs. And today, I see more African Americans than ever in leadership positions, management positions, all across our country. We've come from a long line of discrimination. Some people use the Bible for it. One of the things I was really appalled by was Reverend Flake's performance when he held his forum, calling this the Gay Bill. Counselor Garrett, Counselor Tucker, and Counselor Barnes told you several times, this is not just for LGBT citizens. This is for everyone. How many Asian Americans today are discriminated against, harassed, berated because of COVID-19? How many women still are held back because they're women? How many African Americans are still held back because people still feel that they should be in any positions of power or management or even employed? Hate still lives everywhere. And it's sad that, you know, hate still does exist. We wish to God that it would deny. But I also know that God told us one thing, to love one another as He loved us. To judge not, for we shall be judged. For he is without sin, to cast the first stone. These are the teachings of my Lord, Savior. And I, you know, I just can't understand how people of faith continue to berate a group of people, especially the LGBTQ community. We've been called monsters. We've been called deviants. We've been called monstrosities. We've been called pedophiles. We've been called all kinds of names throughout history. And yet we turn the other cheek and stand up and speak out. And today, I want to encourage you to hold public agendas to undo what the damage that has been done. I hope that you will create a set of public, public meetings across our city to spread the truth about what these nondiscrimination ordinance does for people. Not let all the lies and myths and everything else cloud people's judgments. Because this nondiscrimination ordinance is what is needed. We have an MEI score right now of 61. I've told you about it before in other council meetings. If we do this, this raises our MEI to 30 points more. And with that, more jobs come in, more people are able to work. And the only way to do that is to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. All right, next is Ms., it's Royce J. Morris regarding a request for the city of Columbus to increase tourism by creating a blues museum and music hall downtown to capitalize on being the hometown of Mulrainy. I don't see Royce Morris. Okay. All right. Mr. City Manager? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I've got just a couple of things. This is a work session agenda, as we all know. But I've got one document with the Housing Authority requesting release of funding. And it's.
Motion made by Mayor Prokam, seconded by Counselor Tucker. Any discussion, questions? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, register your votes on screen. Still not used to that being back.
And while they're doing it, Mayor, I would just say, this is just to gain access by the Housing Authority to $100,000 for demolition of two apartment units at Rivers Home located at 1058 Avenue. And that's what that is about.
Okay, and it's approved.
And so with that, we, we do have a work session agenda, and got five topics that we will be discussing today. I've got Columbus Public Transit Survey update, Kirsten Barker, Program Manager for Better Work Columbus.
Morning, Ms. Barker, and Ms. Frey.
Good morning, Mayor, City Manager, Council members. Thank you for inviting me to share this information today, and I believe the Public Works Department as well. And I am the Program Manager for Better Work Columbus, and our program is focused on helping people who have been unemployed or underemployed to find a path to meaningful work that will allow them to earn a living wage. So, that ultimate goal is, is living wage. And we do care a lot and, and look at a lot the barriers that people face during that process. I am also the Vice Chair for the Mayor's Commission on Reentry, and I thank some of our members who have come today to kind of support sharing this information. But the way this came about is during one of our recent commission meetings, the topic of transportation came up, and we were discussing how people will turn down job opportunities because they don't have that transportation to be able to get there. And the question was raised following that meeting, do we have any data on that? And in short, I found the answer was no. I reached out to the nonprofit partners that we work with, and I have, and they all have anecdotal stories that they share, but we didn't have any, any data really to be able to share. And so, this survey was an attempt to begin collecting some data that will help us understand how having limited transportation options in Columbus may be impacting employment in our community. So, that's what this is about. Let's see if I can keep this. So, over the past three years, I've been working with employers and had many conversations with them about the challenges they face with helping their employees. During those conversations, the topic of transportation is one that comes up 90% of the time or more. And so, I, at the onset of this survey, I went to five of, of these employers, and I asked them if they would share a statement with me. And I pulled these comments that you see from those statements that they shared. And I'm not going to read all of them, because you can read them, but I will highlight a couple. You know, I hear that employers say they've seen employees lose job assignments because of attendance issues that are directly related to the bus system being unreliable. I've had, that one employer said, I've had several employers that rely heavily on the bus, and they're perpetually late, resulting in disciplinary action that's outlined in their attendance policy. And of course, shifts are important. People are not able sometimes to accept shift work because the bus doesn't run early enough or late enough for them to be able to work. Here is a comment related to that. One employer said, you know, I've got employees whose shifts start at 1:00 PM but end in all throughout the night, and there's not a bus available, and they don't have family who can pick them up because they're home sleeping. So, they end up having to turn down positions or lose positions because of that. So, those are just some of the comments that I have heard, or types of comments that I've heard from employers. But it was comments like these that initially prompted us to ask that question, how limited public transportation options might impact employment for those who don't have private transportation options, or maybe those options are very limited for them. So, that is indeed the purpose. We surveyed 144 anonymous people in the Columbus area to ask them these questions, and the survey was distributed via nonprofits locally and social media between July 1st and July 16th. You know, I will say this is a limited sample size, but it does allow us to begin to hear the voice of the people who are most impacted by living in a community that's very spread out, like our community is, and that has few options for public transportation. So, the first question that we asked, we wanted to just simply understand where people live. Most of them, 38%, lived in the 31904 ZIP code, followed by about 23% in 31906, and 14% in 31907. The primary purpose for asking this question was to be sure that people live in Columbus who were responding. And I will note that a very small percentage, 5% of the people that responded were in either Phoenix City or Harris County.
What, what percentage?
5%. We also wanted to understand, you know, how many of the individuals we were talking to had a car or had access to a car. And so, we asked this question and found out that 53% of the individuals who had responded to the survey did not own or have access to a car. That's good, because these are the people that we wanted to hear from ultimately. We asked what their primary mode of transportation is, and we found that about 49% of the people that we surveyed either used Metro, so used the bus system alone, or some combination of Metro and walking, or biking, or hitching a ride with a friend. So, those, those types of percentages are what you see here. For, for those who have used Metro as their primary mode of transportation, we found that a majority of them generally take buses 10, 9, 5, or 3. I think those combined to be about 75% of the responses. And, you know, looking at those routes, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, those are buses that go to areas like Airport Throughway, Bradley Park, Peachtree Mall, and I think like St. Mary's and Buena Vista Road. It would be interesting to me to see if that information coincides with what you see, you know, in the actual ridership.
Sure.
On the buses. We also wanted to understand how far people, so starting to get into more why people choose to not ride the bus when that's the only option they have. How far do they have to walk from home to get to the nearest bus stop? And I did some research and found that about a quarter of a mile, so .25 miles, is generally used as an acceptable walking distance in US research studies to get to bus stops. So, it's worth noting here that about 17% of the people responded that they had to walk further than that to get to a bus stop. And then we asked during bad weather, have you ever called out from work or missed appointments to avoid taking the bus? And 43% of the people said yes, that has happened to them. As a follow-up to this question, we asked why, because we wanted to understand why have they, you know, called out of work or missed appointments, so, you know, because they didn't want to have to take the bus. And of the responses, this is a really good highlight of those. Most of them had to do with weather, had to do with shelter being available at the bus stops, had to do with those types of questions. So, what is this doing?
Let's see it out here.
Oh, so I don't have to look up there at it? Oh, y'all are so sweet. Thank you. So, so most of their responses were related to that, to weather, not having shelter, those types of things. We also asked, have they ever been in a position that they've had to depend on the city bus to travel to work? So, not just public transportation in general, although in Columbus, that's what we have, but having to depend, to depend on the bus specifically. And we had 66% of the people who said yes. They've been in situations where they've had to depend on the city bus for that. Having good and reliable public transportation is so important when it's your only option to get where you need to be. So, having 66% of the 144 people that we talked to say they've been in that situation is important. And what I would do is stop here to just say, I hope we all can consider, you know, what if, what if we had to rely on a bus to get in everywhere, all the time? But even more important than getting to the store or getting to an appointment, what if it was the only way we had to get to a job to earn income, to support our family? And so, I talked to many people who just want to find and keep a job, who want to get training, who want to improve their circumstances. And transportation is consistently one of the biggest barriers that they have to deal with, that they communicate. So, following question seven, we asked, to me, what I think are two of the more important questions. And we really asked these to the people who specifically were in that 66% and said yes, they've had to depend on that public transportation in the past. We asked, have you ever turned down a job or not applied for one because the bus did not have a route to that location? And 51% of those people said yes, that they have turned down a job or not applied to one. And that doesn't surprise me at all, because I talked to those people. I have picked up the phone and called someone before and said, hey, this company is looking for someone, you're a good fit for this position. And they've said, I can't apply for that, I can't get there. I don't have any way to get there. So, what I want to say here is, we can't assume, it's easy sometimes to assume, but we can't assume that the bus doesn't need to stop somewhere like the technology park, because everyone who works there has a car. Because when we look at it that way, we're limiting the opportunity for people who need it the most. The next question we asked is, have you ever quit or been terminated from a job because the bus was not able to get you to your job at the scheduled time? And about the same number of people, 50%, said they have quit or been terminated from a job because of this. So, it's no wonder the employers that I talk to are making the comments like they make. You know, they tell me they understand the situation, and they really want to support the people who work for them, and they want to be able to hire some people. But they also have business to run. You know, in a similar way, that you have to deal with the budget issues, they have to deal with those types of issues as well. And so, many of them have spent their own time, valuable time, trying to figure out a solution. And I'm not saying by any means that public transportation is the only answer, but it does play an important role. And also, I'll say, when I break those numbers down for those last two questions, about 50, 51%, looking at the number of people that we surveyed, that is about 48 people who responded with that. As a follow-up, we wanted to understand how reduced or not having that transportation service affects their daily activities. So, when we get in a situation as a city, and it's so important and difficult, it's not easy. We've got budget issues, we cut back, right, because less people are using the service. But I wanted to understand how that impacts the people that don't have any other option. And so, we asked them this question to be able to understand that. And what we found out was, it affects things, of course, like being able to get home from work if they work a second, a late shift, not being able to get to work, not being able to get to school, costing them more money. You know, one person made the comment that on Sundays specifically, they're late because they have to walk, because they want to go to church. So, limiting their ability to be involved in some of those types of activities. All of those things come up. We also heard it slows, slows plans, business plans. So, people who are trying to better themselves, who are trying to go to school, who are trying to do those things, missing appointments, not being able to get a driver's license, that's a real problem for people. So, all of these things make it more difficult, and there's a tendency to think that when bus ridership is low, people don't need it. But what I'm suggesting is that if we put ourselves in the shoes of the people who need, who are the most vulnerable in our community and need it, then, you know, consider that cutting back on bus routes makes it even more difficult for them, and they can become determined to find other ways to get around, or just give up some of those things they want to do, like going to school, or get, finding work. And ultimately, that doesn't help our economy. That just doesn't help our community at all. And the situation's not unique to Columbus, as with everything else, COVID has made it worse. The reports that I looked at from some of the larger cities, including one from Washington DC, concluded that declines in their ridership are, even with COVID, direct results of diminished quality of service. And I'm sure it's no difference here, there's a spiral effect. You know, you have less people using the system, we cut it back, then less people use the system. And what they determined was the only way to improve the result was going to be to improve service. So, in summary, about 50%, 53% of the people we surveyed did not have access to a car. 66% of those people had to rely on the city bus for transportation. About 17% had to walk farther than what is considered the, the maximum range to have to walk to get to a bus stop. 43% have missed work or appointments due to bad weather, and not having adequate shelter is a concern. And then, more importantly, of the 66% who have had to depend on the city bus for work, to travel to work, 51% say they have turned down or not applied to a job because there was no bus route close enough to the work location. And 50% say they have either quit or been terminated from a job because the bus was not able to get them to the job on time. So, I know that having limited transportation causes headaches for employers, because they tell me about those frustrations. And I wish I had an answer for them, and I wish I had an answer for you. While I don't have that answer, what I do hope is that this survey is a first step, even if it's a baby step, to understanding the problem. And I know that we've got some great people in our community. We've got, I mean, you, you in this room who care so much, the people that watch on live stream, the people that come here all of the time to share their hearts with you. We've got so many great people. I have to believe that if we put our heads together, we can find an answer that works and that makes our community stronger. So, thank you, and I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Kristin, thank you.
and that makes our community stronger. So, thank you, and I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Kristin, thank you, you know, for what you do on the reentry commission, but your career, once you've done and trying to, trying to help folks. And I'll say one quick thing, you know, we look at this and we have a tendency to look at it as a, like you'd watch a movie, like, oh man, that's unfortunate. Years ago, Open Door did a program where you were assigned to be a person and they gave you different circumstances that lived in poverty. And I'm telling you, when your, your task is to figure out how to get to work, how to cover when a child needs to go to a doctor's appointment, how to juggle bus lines, do you buy a car or do you buy your medicine? It is, it is as close to an impossible task as I've ever seen. I don't know how, I think in some ways, it is, it is, it is the hardest endeavor that any individual can go through. And a big part of that is transportation. I know the Mayor's Commission on Persons with Disabilities struggles with the same thing. We've got a lot of mobility-challenged people. Counselor House.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Kristin for, for doing this work. This evolved out of discussions we were having on the reentry commission and, you know, there are a lot of stories. But as we talked, it was clear, you know, stories are stories, we need something, you know, some facts to try to sit down and, okay, understand what the problem is. So, this is not a definitive answer for anything to go do. We're not going to go run out by 50 buses because of this study. But the intent is to give us an idea of what the actual impact is so we can, you know, as we move ahead, try to figure out some way to help those people that need transportation. And so, I mean, that's the intent, just to give us an idea, these are some facts of, you know, people and employers that have been surveyed. And it does, you know, kind of give us, you know, a start point for discussion as to what we can do, because in some cases, we can't solve it. But at least we understand a little bit better what the problem is. And as we look for solutions, maybe we can solve some of it. Thank you.
Well, I think the city manager will tell you that because of our, our labor challenges, which is everybody's labor challenge, we are so short on drivers that we're actually operating on Saturday schedules, Monday through Friday, which makes it more difficult for individuals who are trying to time their route to work, because now, instead of waiting about 15 to 30 minutes for the next bus, they got to wait about an hour. So, it's not, you know.
Mr. City Manager, it seems that I remember a couple of years ago, we had some of these kinds of conversations. And one of the real big issues in this was because we rely on some of the federal government funding, that that impacts some of this scheduling and so forth. I remember that I had somebody approach me about wanting to put some bus stop stands up. And they couldn't do it because of the, some of the restrictions from the federal government. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, and you are. And let me just say to Ms. Barker that thank you for what you've done and what you've brought before this council today. And the Metro representatives are not here because I don't think we communicated to them that you were doing it today. Otherwise, they would have been here. But this is great information, and Counselor Thomas is absolutely correct. That was some time ago. But, and I know that this was a limited sample, I believe you said 144 people. But we've had a unique situation. Everything that you've said, you know, I think it's right on point. Our unique situation is that we expanded, and so, we've been back and forth. Prior to the Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, all those things that Counselor Thomas talked about were accurate. I mean, we just didn't have the additional funding to do the bus stop shelters and all the stuff, as Counselor Thomas pointed out. And then, in 2012, came the Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. And we were allocated $22.4 million for public transit. And so, this council authorized Metro to go out and do a comprehensive review of the transit system. They had public meetings and they went and identified every single bus stop. And they monitored who's riding at that bus stop or people riding at that bus stop. And, I mean, this comprehensive review was comprehensive. And so, they came back before this council and they presented an expansion of bus service based on, I mean, we went out and I cannot tell you how many, I don't know the exact number of new buses that we bought. We added more than 20 additional employees, bus operators and support staff. We added bus routes. We, our servers were stopped, we would stop the servers at 8:30 in the evening, the last bus in. Now, the last bus was coming in after midnight in the last couple of years. And so, we had additional bus operators, new buses, additional buses, and an expansion of service from 4:30 AM in the morning until midnight, Monday through Saturday. And thinking that after those hearings and identifying where people are and creating the new routes and some express routes, we'd get more people. And so, after the service started, we said, you know, if, if we don't get the ridership, then we cannot justify running those routes up to midnight because it was just, and I heard everything you said about, you know, I think we kept them out there long enough that...
I was going to ask what, how long?
I can't, I don't have the details of it, but that's what happened. And so, we were not getting the ridership, so initially, we cut the service back, we expanded it. And because of no ridership late at night, we then cut it back to 10 o'clock. And so, and we were trying to drum up the ridership support. And, and so, just in recent time, we've cut it back to when the last bus, I believe it's in at 8:30 PM. So, I want you to know, I don't know how much, if you've talked to Metro, but, but we had and still have money that we're spending, $22.4 million. We created three park and ride sites right here in Columbus, that people could drive in a park and ride, that was part of what we used the money for. And so, so we've gone from this limited service to this expanded service that we've cut back because no ridership. And then, the pandemic, as the mayor just said, we didn't have drivers, so we are running a Saturday schedule on weekdays.
Yeah, yeah. I do have one question, a related question, and I appreciate all of that. It's a lot to try to manage and work through and, you know, get the feedback and figure out. I do wonder how long, if it was long enough, you know, that that was in place. And then, I do wonder, because shift work is a part of that, and I don't know that the shifts actually get off until like 3:00 or 3:30, you know, 12:00 might not be the magic time. But, but that's actually not what I wanted to ask. I had one of the employers that I worked with recently tell me she had been to Metro and talked to them about adding a shelter over the bus stop near their company, and it wasn't received well. And I just was wondering whether that had been a part of those discussions, because the question of weather did tend to come up a lot with people not wanting to, you know, wait for buses in the rain or in the bad weather.
Yeah, well, well, let me say that, as I said earlier, they identify, and they've got this sophisticated bus route system that they can survey at each bus stop. And they can select a button when they get to a particular bus stop where there is a rider. And there's a computer printout that will show the bus stop they're riding in. And so, some employers, not saying this one, will want a nice bus stop shelter in front of their place. But Metro, they've captured all the data and they know that no one's riding at that bus stop. And so, they want to spend the money, put the bus shelters where people are riding. And so, what I want to do is connect you, because I think you can help us with all that you've done, and I think you need to be an advisor to us. And so, I want to have, she's not here today, but Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin, Chia Shae Johnson is going to make sure we've got all your contact information. And we're going to follow up with you. And we want to put you at the table with the Metro people. We want them to see this, we want to discuss it, and we want to see what we can do different to make transportation better. But, and so, Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin is going to follow up with you and pull all the parties together, because, I mean, that's great, a great survey information. And I know you're passionate about it and we want your passion. And so, this is not the last conversation we're going to have.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, I'm happy to do that. I also will say, you know, I can stand up here and talk about this all day, I would rather you hear from the people who are actually experiencing the issues, you know.
So, we will follow up, I can assure you, with you.
And you know, Mr. City Manager, there are opportunities that our citizens are missing because they can't make all of this work. I know that, for example, St. Luke's School was giving scholarships to kids who lived in North Highland to come to St. Luke's School. They couldn't get there. They didn't have transportation. They couldn't get to the school, so we had to do something else. Same thing with St. Anne's and Calvary Christian. They wanted to give these kids these opportunities if we can just figure out how to do that. And I believe that there are some folks sitting around this table that could figure out how to do that. Because it's, it's, as the mayor said, if you've never had to depend on public transportation to go get your medicine, you don't have a clue what it, what it takes to do that, to get there. And so, I'm always encouraged with our Metro staff who are willing to give it a try. Let's see what we can do. And I commend them for that, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. I remember the conversation that Counselor Tom, Thomas was referring to. And at that time, I believe Counselor Garrett and I brought up the possibility of smaller vehicles instead of these large, you know, more, more vehicles, but the smaller vehicles. And I think I'd like us to address that one more time, because especially now, where we are low in CDL drivers, we don't, they don't need to have that type of a license to be driving a van or something like that. And then, also, maybe some public-private partnerships with these, with these companies. You know, we don't put up the shelter, the company puts up the shelter. You know, the companies that want to be a part of this program, they work with us, they provide the shelters, they, and then, they work with us so that they have a specific route that, that, you know, accomplishes getting their employees to and from work during that, those different shifts. It seems, I understand that I come up with ideas that seem very logical and very, you know, just matter of fact. And then, you, you, you know, slam me with the bureaucracy of, you know, why this doesn't work. And so, I'm hoping that, you know, maybe we can get around the bureaucracy by having a public-private partnership. And so, I'd like us to look into that.
Sure, and I, you know, I don't want to limit any of our options. So, I mean, I'm open, we are open to, to that.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Woodson.
Yes, Counselor Crabbe touched on it a little bit. I was in a GMA and I heard a conversation going that some jobs are desperate for employees, so they're offering different incentives. I tend to agree with Counselor Crabbe, is talking to our employers to see what are they're willing to do to provide for their employees. Maybe they'll provide the pass or half and half on their taxi or Uber, whatever they take to get to work, if that's something you guys can also consider as you're talking with Metro and yourself, ma'am. Innovative ways, different ways. Some companies have been giving bonuses, some companies have been paying for babysitters, some companies have been doing different innovative. We're in a time of crisis right now in our country and we can't just depend just on government. We have to, everybody chip in and help and do a little bit. There's that neighbor going the same way, drop her off, you give her a couple of dollars for gas. We need to get back into that innovative way to share a ride and possibly the employees to share a ride.
I agree. And some of the solutions that I've seen, that, that's at the core, yeah.
Ms. Barker, didn't appear to be any more questions. You know, this is all part of the bigger, this is a piece that goes in a bigger puzzle and that puzzles poverty. And to be able to try to keep people employed off the streets, give them a roof over their head, and try to get people who are starting over after paying a debt for some type of transgression, it's all predicated on giving them access. So, I think, I think your presentation has caught the attention of the city manager and I would imagine we'll try to pull together a group that, if nothing else, just furthers the conversation, looks for more innovative ways to try to take care of this one piece of the bigger challenge.
Well, it absolutely got my attention and, and I want to make sure that we do all that we can to have the best public transit system that we can have, especially considering we got this $22.4 million and, and we've gotten CARES Act money for transit, we've gotten ARP money for transit. And so, we need to make sure that we are taking care of the people as best we can. The only challenge that we have, and you heard Counselor Crabbe talk about the buses and, you know, we got to have the ridership and, and because if we don't, we hear from people saying that, you know, why do you have that big bus and two people on it? And so, we have, I mean, with dollar ride and even on fixed route, you know, and I've, since we're on this Saturday schedule, you've probably seen it too, but we have these mini buses, I mean, that seats 20 or 25 on regular routes right now. So, some of that is going on, but we got to have the ridership to make sense. And the reason we cut back from midnight to 10 is that we have these electronic technology, these electronic fare boxes. They can survey, they can tell you how many pennies, nickels, dimes, quarters and dollar bills and whether they were elderly or disabled, because they got, they touch a key to tell you if it's an elderly or disabled, and they can tell you what bus stop. And that's why they know that, you know, if someone's not riding at a particular bus stop or here are the bus stops they are riding at, because they, they're telling, and they print this printout, you know, at night, they go and they, they pull the fare box and they, they put it in, they use some, and to retrieve all the data into the computer, it sends it to the administrative offices on data, and they can pull that report and they can tell you all about what happened on that route.
Yes, I appreciate all of that.
So, they have that sophistication, that's why they can tell you what bus stop people are riding at. And so, they know. So, but anyway, we're going to get with you and we want your, that report is awesome. And any input, advice, we want you to share it with us and we're willing to do whatever it takes to make sure we take care of the people. We'll be in touch.
Thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, and I love Counsel, Councilwoman Crabbe, I love your ideas, I think... I think that's honestly the way that we need to be thinking about this. So thank you for all of that, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Sure.
Kristen, we have one more counselor that'd like to, Counsel Hough.
Ms. Barker, thank you for your presentation. I'm sorry I had to step out and take a call, but I was listening a little in the back, and I just want to assure you that the city manager has worked with us in the past, and I'm sure he's going to work with you going forward. I'm one of the counselors that's been in his ear over the past 10 years, and he's tried different things in my district, and some have worked, some we, the people, sometimes we need you and others to kind of corral them together to make sure that they understand that the numbers have to be up. And he's had buses to come into areas to make it simple, and then the ridership decreased, and we had to remove the bus from that particular route. So figure out a way, your presentation was great, but figure out a way, once we get the people who are needy for these services to come together and make sure they will be available to ride, and then it makes it real simple once we put it in place.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, yeah, and I look forward to working with you. And I, I guess going back to the question, it's great that we're looking at the data. I guess I just want to be sure we're asking the right questions, too.
Sure. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Ms. Barker, for that presentation. Next on the agenda is Chief Scarper.
Yes, sir. Next, I've got Chief Scarper, Columbus Fire and EMS Services Fleet Status Update. Welcome, Chief Scarper.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. I'm happy to be here today. I understand you got about half of my slide deck, so it won't take all morning to get through the 96 slides. I'm just kidding. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you today to discuss the status of our fleet. By the way, my name is Sal Scarper. I'm the Fire and EMS Chief here in Columbus, as well as the EMA Director for the city. I want to share with you, and apologize to you in advance, unfortunately, that this report is not a good news report. It is a culmination of about a year-long investigation, kind of a deep dive look into or the status of our fleet, which is unfortunately a little challenging. But I'll start with the pretext. I wish I was here to, to give you some information on some of the great programs that our organization is engaged in, to talk about the partnership opportunity we have with the school system, where we're finally employing school kids as firefighters here in our community, or their, the great save rate from our cardiac arrest saves, where we're not only giving people a second chance of life, but giving them the opportunity to walk out of the hospital with, with all their faculties intact. But we're not here to talk about that, those great things. I'm here to talk to you about something a little more challenging. So to give you a little pretext, as you all know, our mission is preservation of life, protection of life, property and the environment. We do that by providing nearly 400 firefighters across this city, serving from 14 fire stations strategically located throughout our 220 square miles of Columbus. We have about, we have 12 ambulances on a good day that are provided to serve our community in addition to a variety of fire apparatus, which I'm going to share with you today, and please feel free to ask any questions you have. We consider ourselves an all-response agency, which means we respond to any kind of incident within our response district. There is no one else around us that provides the resources and capabilities that we have. We have to go all the way to Atlanta to get to the resources that we have. There are other fire departments around us that are smaller, volunteer for organizations that are great people, but they simply do not have the resource capability that we have, because we serve such a large metropolitan statistical area. We are, I consider us a world-class organization. People ask me all the time, well, what does that mean? We have world-class service. What does that mean? Well, our fire department is an internationally accredited organization. We are accredited by the Center for Fire Accreditation International. There are over 25,000 fire departments in the United States. Of those, there are about 256 of them that are accredited, so we are of the, a small percentage of those, of the elite fire departments. In addition to that, our organization is rated by the Insurance Services Organization. That entity rates 40,000 entities across the United States on their capacity to provide fire protection to the community. They rate those agencies on a scale from 1 to 10, with 1 being the best and 10 being the worst. Our agency is a Class 1 city. Of those, 40,000, there are about 1,000 of those that are Class 1. If you put all that together, the number of combined agencies that are both accredited and, and Class 1, ISO Class 1, there's less than 100 in the United States. So we are the top 1/10th, 1% of all fire departments in the United States, and our folks are very proud of that. So that's what I talk about, when I say world-class, that's what I'm talking about. But we are facing a critical challenge, and it is probably our most significant challenge. I spent the first several months of my time here, beginning in August of last year, visiting with our crews and our members, and trying to determine what our needs are, what our challenges were, and what we do well, and what do we struggle with. And I heard different things as you might anticipate, pay is a struggle, some of our facilities are challenged, but the number one issue facing our, our men and women out in the field had to do with our fleet. So I want to give you kind of a pretext of what our fleet looks like. Our fleet is made up of a variety of apparatus, as you can see here in the photo, what we call an engine, a fire engine, which is the ubiquitous symbol for the fire service. We have 13 primary engines spread out across the city on a good day, and again, three in reserve that we keep across the city. You can always tell an engine, they look very much like that, as opposed to a ladder truck, which you can always tell a ladder truck, because it has a ginormous ladder standing on the top of it. We have six of those primary assets spread out across the city on a good day, and one in reserve. We have what we call a squad inventory, which is basically our heavy rescue equipment. We have two of those in the city. The one pictured here is our squad that services our hazardous materials response team. The other one is, the other one looks very similar to that. It says heavy rescue on it, and it encompasses all of our tactical specialties that our fire department must manage. In addition to that, of course, we have a fleet of ambulances. Columbus Fire Department has six ambulances that we maintain and keep ready on the street, in addition to four in reserve. Again, these are on good days. We partner with a private ambulance service, two private ambulance services, excuse me, that provide an additional six ambulances, again, on good days. In addition to that, we have a wide variety of specialty equipment included here. You can see a photo of our tractor trailer with our GSAR equipment. GSAR stands for Georgia Search and Rescue. These are state-owned assets that we, we maintain, and we utilize to provide services to our community and our region. We have tractor trailers, we have boat trailers, swiftwater trailers. Within our department, we have jet skis, boats, ATVs, and a variety of support trailers. Again, we have to manage any incident within our region, because help is quite a ways away. So we have a variety of equipment that we must maintain and train on. And of course, we have a fleet of support vehicles. These include everything from our battalion chiefs' cars, the folks that are out in the field today managing the, the services of our members, our fire inspectors, our investigators, our training division, which is spread out all over the city, in addition to our logistics fleet, which transports everything that we get in terms of our equipment and supplies, from personal protective equipment to toilet paper, to all of our fire stations across the community, and our administrative vehicles. Our challenges within our fleet are kind of within these four broad categories, and I'll talk about them briefly. We have an aging stock of equipment. Over the years, we, the city has been unable to replace apparatus as quickly as perhaps we would like, and that's due to a variety of reasons. We have a lack of preventable maintenance, and I'll talk a little bit about that. I've had some, some great conversation in our partnership with our Public Works Department. We have significant repair challenges and replacement hurdles. I'll kind of take each one in turn. This is kind of a snapshot of our aged fleet. As you can see, we have our frontline, the top line is our frontline apparatus, our reserve status, again, on a good day. The average age is anywhere from eight to 12 years of age. I'll tell you, having worked with fire departments across the United States, that's on the older side. Our average mileage is fairly significant, particularly when it comes to our ambulances. And this doesn't even begin to address the challenges associated with our, our other vehicles. Kind of a breakdown, here's all of our engines. You can see the ones that have an asterisk, a single asterisk next to it. The third one there from the top is slated for replacement with a piece of equipment that was ordered earlier this year, and that one down there at the bottom, engine 10, will then move into reserve status. You can see the age ranges from anywhere from four years all the way up to 19 years of age, which is a really, really long time for a fire engine. Our ladders are listed there. Ladder 12 is slated to move into reserve status when ladder 4 is replaced, hopefully next year, when that piece of equipment arrives, and again, you can see the mileage associated with those ladders there. Interestingly enough, ladder 1, which is downtown at our downtown station, relatively close to the government center, has a very few miles on it, but that is probably one of our busiest ladders in the city, has very few miles, because it doesn't run very far. It covers our downtown area, and it moves a lot, but it doesn't have a lot of miles on it. Our ambulances are listed here. Again, the star asterisk, the asterisk ones are the ones that are slated to be replaced, and the ones that will move into reserve status. You can see the mileage, and some of them are pushing 200,000 miles. We have, this slide is, in terms of the mileage, is about a month and a half old, so the mileage has increased a little bit over that time.
And Mayor, if I may just ask quickly.
Yes, sir.
If you go back to that slide, is there an average age for the various pieces of equipment? I didn't catch that.
The average age, there's the third line down.
Well, I shouldn't say average age, but the useful life expected.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I will, I will get to that, if you'll allow me a moment.
Sure.
So the, I asked when I, when I first came to Columbus, what is our replacement schedule here in Columbus, because it varies across the country. Most agencies have a standard schedule. Some of it's based on years, some of it's based on a formula, some of it's based on just what works for that particular agency. In the city of Columbus, we have a replacement schedule that looks like this, 10 years, 100,000 miles for an engine, five years, 100,000 miles for an ambulance, and 10 years, 120,000 miles for a staff vehicle. And so I asked, so where, where does that come from? Does anybody, can anybody tell me where that, those numbers originate from? And I wasn't able to get a clear response, other than that's what we've typically done for, over the years. I said, okay, that's, that's fine, that's, that's what we've done. So if we take our apparatus and apply that model, this is kind of what that breakdown looks like. You can see, obviously, red is, is bad, and green is, is current. We have a large contingent of our fleet is in, in bad shape and overdue for replacement. Our repair challenges are significant. We work hand-in-hand with our Public Works Department, who have done a tremendous job. And I want to say that again, they have done a tremendous job in supporting us as best they can. They are faced with their own challenges, and challenges as it pertains to supporting us in, in terms of repair. But the fact of the matter is, today, the vast majority of our fleet repairs are outsourced to a third party. That is largely, in fact, largely in part due to the fact that Public Works diesel mechanics have retired in the short period of time that I've been here, and we have been unable to replace them. And so when we outsource, that was repairs, we outsource them at a significant premium. And I want to say that again, that is a significant premium. As a result, our fleet maintenance costs have doubled in three years, and they are projected to rise significantly again this year. That is why I was, I was here before council a couple of weeks ago, because our, we went over budget in our fleet repair challenges. That is likely to continue until we're able to get a hold of this. Our out-of-service time, when trucks go down for, for service, our goal is to get them back in service. We want, we want them out of service 3% to 5% of the year. That allows us enough flexibility within our fleet to be able to keep stuff on the road and take stuff out of service for repair. On average, our ambulances are out of service about 45 days a year, an engine about 40 days a year, and a ladder truck about 35 days out of the year. That is pretty significant, and makes quite a significant challenge for our operations folks, who are trying to keep apparatus in service and on the road. So it's just really a challenge. Why has this not become an issue for you? And quite honestly, it's because of the partnership we have with our folks at Public Works, and the men who are sitting behind here, behind me here today, and some who cannot be here. They have band-aided, bailing wire, duct taped, and done everything that we can to do to keep our trucks and our equipment on the road. I'm here to tell you today, I'm here today to tell you we are out of band-aids. We have a significant challenge in terms of our fleet. We are a data-driven organization in the fire department, and we look at, we look at data to make decisions, and we, we look at things like, how long is it going to take me to replace some of our equipment, if I were to order it today? And these numbers are B.C., so before COVID, and specifically before this most recent wave of COVID. We were looking at an engine replacement of about 12 to 14 months, ladder replacement of about 18 months, an ambulance about nine to 10 months, and some of our specialty vehicles upwards of 18 months. Again, that was B.C. Those numbers have increased significantly.
So, do you have any idea that they, how much longer? I was trying to make the point earlier, with COVID, the pandemic, you know, you can't just order something and think it's going to be, you know? And, and that was the point I was making. Do you know what that looks like?
So today, so for example, we ordered, council approved an emergency purchase for us earlier this year for an engine, a ladder, and a couple of ambulances. We ordered those in January, February this year. We're anticipating the ambulances, November, December timeframe, so about a year. The engine, we're not anticipating until April of next year, so about, what is that, 16 months? And then the ladder truck in July of next year, which is about 18 months. We anticipate that those numbers will probably be stretched out, as the supply chain around the world has been significantly disrupted. We are hearing from our manufacturers and our dealers that those, those numbers are likely to continue to push. So again, to your point, Mr. City Manager, you're absolutely right. You can't buy this stuff off the lot. They don't exist anymore. There was a time early in my career when you can, you can buy something off the lot, if you will. That doesn't really happen anymore.
Or off the shelf.
Off the shelf. Those things are gobbled up fairly quickly and become quickly unavailable. So I want to share with you what status zero means. We use this term a lot in our fire department, unfortunately. Status zero means we are in a position where there are no reserve engines or ladders in the city. Today, we are at status zero. We are at status zero a lot. So if a engine goes down for repair out of service, or a ladder goes down out of service, we do not have anything to replace it with. That company is then taken out of service, and we have a deficit in our fleet. I will tell you that we are seeing that with significantly increased frequency over the last six months that I've been here, and that is why I appreciate the opportunity to share this with you. The result of that is we have decreased reliability. Reliability means I have an engine that serves this part of the community, well, if this engine over here goes down, I have to pull an engine from somewhere else to, to respond to that. So the reliability of that engine serving its first new territory goes down, and then we have that multiplied across the system, and the challenge is, it becomes very real. Increased response times is what, what that translates to, increased wear and tear on our apparatus, and we are what I call stressing the system. Our system is very stressed. The impact for our community is significant. When I first came up in the fire service many years ago, 30 years ago now, when we were fighting fires, we were fighting fires in homes where everything was made out of wood. That is no longer the case. We are fighting fires in homes where everything is now made out of plastic. And so the rate of fire growth in these homes today is much faster than it was when I started as a young man in the fire service. And so it's important for us to get there quickly. And so in our community, in the city of Columbus, a building fire occurs about every 20, these are five-year averages in the city of Columbus only. A building fire occurs in our community about every 25 hours. And a building fire can be something as significant as what you see here, or something a little less significant, like that's handled with, with a couple of, a couple of companies. A residential fire, which is one or two family dwelling, occurs about every two days in our community. Sometimes it's something as small as food on the stove, sometimes it's much more significant, and we're displacing families. An apartment building fire occurs on average every five days in our community. Again, sometimes they are smaller, and we have, you know, they don't make the news. Sometimes they are significant events. We have had, I've had more than my fair share of significant fire events in apartment complexes since I've been here. The average annual loss to do to fire in our community is about $8 million a year. I'm not a big fan of that number, because that number fluctuates quite a bit. If we lose one mill or one significant structure, that number can, can vary wildly. And to date, in the city of Columbus, we have had fire fatalities in 2021. We are also challenged with the fact that we are routinely at status zero when it comes to our ambulances. And this is probably our most significant challenge right now, with the most recent wave of COVID. Status zero for us is a result of the fact that we are unable to maintain our fleet. We have apparatus downtimes that are significantly longer than they should be, incapacity of our private contractor support team, private, private partners to be able to staff their ambulances routinely. They are struggling. They are struggling getting paramedics, just as we are. And so there are times when we have, we're supposed to have 12 ambulances on the street. There are days when that does not happen. When that, when that, those days happen, that stresses the system. And we have ambulances that leave the fire station and do not come back. We had one private service, when I first came here, we had three private services that we partnered with. One of them abruptly left the city of, the city of Columbus and the state of Georgia. I don't want to say in the middle of the night, but over a seven-day time period, leaving us with two private ambulance services. So I went to those ambulance service and asked them, can you please pick up the other ambulance that this other service was, was no longer able to do? And they tried to do that for a while. They simply cannot sustain that. And so we are stressing the system. And our capacity as a fire department to react when we don't have control over that is, is significantly challenging. Our longer, what we call wall times, which is the time and amount, the time it takes to clear an ambulance from a hospital when we transport a patient to a hospital, they are, on average, before COVID. This is before this last wave of COVID, staying at the hospital 45 minutes, waiting for a bed. So I transport a patient to a hospital, they wait in the ER with that patient, that hospital, that ambulance cannot clear the hospital for 45 minutes. Meanwhile, calls are coming in. Calls are coming in. So the ambulance that, a call that that ambulance was supposed to take is having to be handled by another ambulance in another part of the community. Again, stressing the system. I will tell you that with this recent wave of COVID, that wall time is significantly higher. I had a conversation with one of our staff the other day. We have wall times upwards of three hours, where we are waiting on a bed for three hours. That takes that ambulance out of service, out of the system for three hours. Our fire department responds to 40,000 calls for service every year. That number does not go down. That number goes up every year. And so it is significantly stressing the system. It is my opinion that a city of this size, we need two additional ambulances on the street. We have, in addition to our private partners, one of the things that they did for us, they used to do in our, as part of our contract, was they provided a peak time ambulance, which means during the day, Monday through Friday, eight to five, they provided an additional ambulance to help service our community. That quickly went away shortly after I got here. They have not been able to, they've not been able to do that ever since. So again, we went from having 14 ambulances on a good day with a, a number of reserves, now we have zero reserves, and typically we're, we're down to about 10 to 11 ambulances. We are stressing the system and stressing our personnel. So again, the consequence is decreased reliability, increased response times, increased wear and tear on our apparatus. The burnout on our personnel is significant. We are holding our own as best we can. I don't have a problem hiring. I, I feel for our police chief and our, and our folks and our law enforcement partners who are struggling to hire. We don't have that problem hiring. I have problems hiring paramedics across the country. I can't hire paramedics, but I can hire firefighters. But I don't want to continue to do that, because our folks are leaving, because they're stressing out and burning out over this issue. The community impact, of course, of having the ambulances, I don't need to explain to you, is significantly important, of having, getting them on the scene quickly. We tell everybody cardiac arrest, brain death occurs in seven, six minutes, begins to occur in six minutes if you don't, if you don't react quickly, and is irreversible after 10 minutes. It is important that we get there quickly. For folks who have a stroke, it is important that we get those arteries back open within 90 minutes for those folks to be able to walk out of the hospital with all their faculties. So again, it's important for us to get there quickly. We used to call it the golden hour when I first started the fire service. If you had a trauma event, you were in a car crash, or shot, or stabbed, or fell down a flight of stairs, you have a significant injury, you had to be treated in the hospital within, within an hour to have any success, to have a significant rate of success. So that hour becomes really challenging for us as we're waiting. So what's in jeopardy? Again, our organization, organizational morale is challenged. We're looking at personnel burnout. We are stressing the system. And I'm not, I know I'm not alone in this. I know our, our partners across the country are facing the same challenge with, associated with COVID. But I cannot, I cannot manage a turnover challenge on top of this. We have, currently, so far, we've, we've avoided a, a large majority of that, but it's coming. Our ISO rating is in jeopardy. If we are unable to sustain and maintain what we're currently doing, our ISO rating, by the way, is, impacts your insurance. So it is a small component of your homeowner's insurance, but it is a major component of your commercial industrial insurance. So as your ISO rating goes up, so does your insurance, insurance premiums. And that detracts from people wanting to relocate to Columbus. So when businesses are looking to come to Columbus, oftentimes, they might ask, what's your ISO rating? We get that question a lot. ISO class one, they're going to get the best insurance premiums they can possibly get. That ISO rating gets jeopardized, it goes up, insurance premiums, particularly for our commercial and industrial community, goes up precipitously. Our accreditation status is also in jeopardy. If we are unable to do what we say we're doing in terms of maintaining our fleet, we have the potential for losing our accredited status. We, we are scheduled for an accreditation review in 2023, where we will go before the Center for Fire Accreditation International and have to talk about what we're doing. Everybody's facing challenges, and we will, we will get some grace, but we have some challenges certainly to deal with. And most importantly is the fact that we have an unavailability of resources. It is a scary, scary thought to think that you might call 911 and not have that resource be able to respond, or have it respond significantly later. When you're standing there with a child who's not breathing, or an older person who's fallen down the stairs, and they have to wait 30, 40, 50 minutes for an ambulance, that's not going to go well for our community. I want to thank the council in 2021, early this year, January is timeframe, you approved an emergency purchase, like I mentioned, for an engine, a ladder, and a couple of ambulances. At that time, I, I knew enough about our fleet that we were in a, we were in a bad way, and I approached the mayor and the city manager about doing an emergency purchase, and I appreciate that. That equipment is scheduled to arrive, again, the fourth quarter this year for our ambulances, and the first and second quarter of next year for our engine and ladder. We have requested the addition of, replacement of six ambulances as part of ARP, and I know that's currently being considered, as well as some other resources, as you see there with ARP money. So what we've, what have we done? Again, I mentioned, I've been doing, looking at this kind of in-depth for about a year. We haven't just sat back and watched this happen. We've taken steps to address as best we can. We're working hand in hand, lockstep with our Public Works Department, who have been fantastic in working with us to help get our trucks, just get our trucks on the road. I'm not talking about doing preventative maintenance. We haven't done preventative maintenance for a long time. We're talking about getting trucks on the road, keep them moving. But we are working with them to bring our maintenance firm on site, since they have been unable to fill those diesel mechanic positions, to enter into a public-private partnership, to bring a maintenance firm on site, to work on our apparatus, and get them on the road and keep them on the road. We have standardized our fleet, fleet specifications for our fleet, so that we don't have to go into a long process of what it takes to build a truck. We've standardized that, so we have specifications for when we're ready to buy our next truck. You just hand it to manufacturer specifications, that's what we want. We've standardized that across our fleet for a variety of reasons. We've modified our ambulance capability. We've gotten away from diesel, which has been significantly challenging, particularly on the ambulances, and gone to gas. That will help with the maintenance on those things. We've implemented what we call a cold response, which means we respond non-lights and sirens to those low acuity calls. When you call 911, which is frustrating, but people do it, people call 911, say, I have a rash, I've had it for several days, I need to go to the emergency room. We have to go. We respond to ambulances, we respond them, not emergency to those types of calls, but we have those frequently. But that is designed to limit the wear and tear on our apparatus and to make our people and our community safer. And we've resigned, probably the most important thing we've done, since I've been here in terms of fleet, is reassign the field operations lieutenant, who is on a truck managing a company of firefighters, pulled them off the truck, brought them downtown, and gave them the responsibility of working directly with our Public Works Department in fleet maintenance coordination. That alone is the only reason, in conjunction with our Public Works partners, why we have not had to, had to close, close down companies for long periods of time. That is a significant, significant deal for us. So what are we doing now? We're looking at long-term fleet maintenance options. As I mentioned, we're working in lockstep with our Public Works partners to bring, bring a presentation to you shortly, an emergency services contract to provide full-time maintenance solution at our Public Works garage. We're going to bring a company in, who we have identified as working in other parts of the state, who can work on our fleet, in our Public Works garage, and keep our stuff on the road. There's a public-private partnership that we're looking at. We're developing a comprehensive fleet management program, where we take apparatus and move them around the city as they age out. So typically, in the past, what we've done is we buy a truck, we put it out in Station One, and when that truck at Station One gets old enough, we replace it. Well, that truck at Station One gets a lot of hard miles really quick. Doesn't get a lot of miles, but it gets a lot of hard, hard running, because it's one of our busiest stations. What we're talking about now is taking that truck as it gets to its later part in its life and putting it out to one of our stations where perhaps it can get less, more, less challenging miles, and, and extend the life of that apparatus. We're evaluating the possibility of remounting our ambulances, ambulance boxes on new chassis. That's something we're not able to, to recommend right now, but we're, hopefully, next year, perhaps with our next batch of ambulances, we might be able, instead of buying an entire new ambulance, just take the box off, keep the box, which is, the box is typically good, and put a new chassis on there, which would save the city a tremendous amount of money. We're looking at that. We're evaluating community education initiative to address the misuse and abuse of the 911 system. That is going to be an uphill battle. It doesn't just affect us, it affects our dispatchers, it affects our hospitals, it affects our public health, it affects our mental health partners. So we're looking at a partnership opportunity where we'll bring all those people together in a task force to work on this initiative. We can't do that right now, because the system is so stressed with COVID, we have to wait till the COVID goes away. We're developing a solution to fleet replacement for cars that is revenue positive for the city. I want to say that again, we have a solution that is revenue positive for the city. That is almost unheard of, but we have been working with the Houston Fire Department, who have been doing this for years, in a partnership agreement with Enterprise Car Rental. We've, we met with our Public Works partners, and we met with Enterprise. We'll be bringing forth that recommendation, hopefully shortly, probably through our Public Works Department. And finally, we're developing an apparatus contingency plan. And what that means is, we are planning for long-term closures of apparatus. And what that, what does that look like? When we don't have enough apparatus on the street, and we have to take that piece of equipment out of, out of service, and we have a deficit somewhere in our system, how do we cover that? We are actively planning that today. We've done a condition assessment on all of our apparatus. When I put this slide together, we hadn't completed that. We were able to complete that for this, for this presentation. I'll share that with you briefly. Again, we're working with our Public Works Department on a long-term solution. And in addition to that, we've met with Columbus Technical College. They have a heavy diesel mechanic program that they just started this fall. We will not be able to leverage any, any assets from that for a couple of years until those kids get further along, but we're, we're working in partnership with them to see what that looks like for us in a couple of years. I think that will be a good opportunity for us. I mentioned to you that the city has a replacement schedule of a number of years and certain mileage. Again, we are a data-driven organization, so we look at, how can we be more effective with how we replace our equipment? So this is the model we use. This is produced by the American Public Works Association. This is nothing new, but this is something that we've done to assess the status of our fleet. And we've assessed every piece of equipment that we own over the past 12 months, based on these things, current age, miles, hours, type of service, the reliability, which, which points to how many times it's been to the shop, and then maintenance and repair costs. And then we assign each piece of equipment a value, anywhere from zero to 28 or more points. The higher the number of points, the more immediate the need for the replacement of that piece of equipment. So when we apply this model to our current fleet, this is what we look at in terms of our heavy apparatus. Our heavy apparatus is our engines, our ladders, and our ambulances. As you can see, it's a little bit better than the model that, that is, that's currently being used in terms of the picture, but you can see about 50% of our engines are, are in dire need of replacement. Four, three, three of our six ladders are in need of replace, three of our seven ladders are in need of replacement, and then 80% of our ambulances are in need of replacement. Yellow means they qualify for replacement, which means we should be looking at buying those things now, getting the order in, because it takes a long time to get them, and then get good and excellent. If we apply that same model to our cars, we just take out the component that has to do with fire engines and ladders, which drops the points down about five points. You can see the status of our cars and our, our support equipment. We have three cars that are what we call deadlined. In other words, they're so bad, and they're so, the value of those cars is, is essentially zero, but we don't have the money to replace them, so we keep repairing them to keep them on the road. You can see about 60% of our support vehicles are in the immediate consideration range, and about almost 50% of our equipment. Equipment is trailers, ATVs, boats, things like that. That's the same slide, just all the equipment combined. Again, so if you're a graphic person, you like to see things visually, like I am, that's what that kind of looks like graphically. Again, red is bad, green is good, and we certainly have a challenge with our fleet. We are at a crucial tipping point with the status of our fleet today and the current environment. We're in with logistics and repairing equipment and trying to get equipment ordered, we're at a tipping point where we are in a needs, we're in a position where we need to act. I know over the years, it's been challenging to fund some of these things. I would encourage us to see if there's an opportunity to do that today. What we're proposing is that we adopt the, as a fire department, we've already adopted the condition assessment model as our way of managing, assessing what our fleet looks like. It's based on data, and that's how, that's how we operate in the fire department. We need to keep our fleet maintenance coordinated position, full-time position, which means I need to add a person. I have a, I have a fire truck right now out there in the field with, with no supervisor on there. We're just putting somebody in that, in that seat. I need to replace that position. We need to enter into a public-private partnership. Again, Public Works will be bringing that initiative forward to you, hopefully soon, within the next 30 to 60 days. We've identified a vendor who is doing this currently in the state of Georgia with two other fire agencies, and it is working tremendously. We are also looking at trialing the program where we are revenue positive for the city in terms of replacing our cars. That is a partnership with Enterprise. Again, Public Works will probably bring that initiative forward to you here soon. Unfortunately, this will not be enough to stave off significant, significant deficits in our fleet. So the fire department is recommending an aggressive fleet replacement schedule, and I'm talking about taking all those things that are in red and replacing them. And I know that this is not good news, I know it's an expensive ask, but this is what it boils down to. Six ambulances, I know, are already being, already being considered in ARP money, is about $2.2 million worth of ambulances there. Eight of our engines and three of our ladders accounts to about $9.7 million to replace those pieces of equipment. Those things need to be replaced. What we're recommending is in 2022, fiscal year 2223, we add QRVs to our model. QRVs are quick response vehicles, they're SUVs, staffed with a couple of persons that can quickly respond to those low acuity calls and take the wear and tear off of our heavy apparatus. We need to add two ambulances to the street. We do not have enough ambulances for the city of this size. That requires not only the acquisition of two ambulances, but staff to, to staff those app, staff, staff those ambulances. And then we'll need to replace three engines and two ladders. It's a significant ask, and that's a significant challenge. I'm happy to answer any questions. I do thank you for the opportunity to present to you today.
Thank you, Chief. And we wanted, wanted council to see this presentation, because Chief's been talking for a while about the dire need for some of these apparatus to be able to continue to provide the level of service that we have been providing. So the city manager and I are going to be bringing a recommendation to council on how to approach the recommendations that the chief's talked about, and come up with some funding alternatives for council to look at. Counselor Huff?
Chief Scarp, thank you for the presentation. I understand the dire need for the equipment and everything, but explain to the council and the public, how safe are your people right now?
I would tell you that the men and women of Columbus Fire and EMS have, have done a tremendous job of trying to do the best they can with the equipment they have. We're at a point, unfortunately, where they are losing faith in their equipment. We had an incident here recently where one of our members was injured because of a failure of equipment. We cannot continue, the thing, one of the things that keeps me up at night is one of our pieces of equipment failing, failing, and a member or an entire company or a number of companies are getting hurt or killed because of a failure of equipment. I don't, I don't ever want to make that, I don't want, ever want to be the fire chief that has to make that, have that conversation with, with the family member. But I would tell you that we're doing the best we can, our public works is doing the best we can, but it is a challenge.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you there were at least, there are a couple of incidents I'm aware of where a pump quit providing water to, to firefighters. One occasion, they were inside, three guys, three firefighters inside a property fighting a blaze when the water quit coming out. Counselor Thomas?
Chief Scarborough, one of the things that I noticed on there was that you talked about the lieutenant being replaced by someone else. Is this, is this a position that you already have someone that could fill that position? Or is this a position that we need to create? Or what is the status of that?
Yes, ma'am. Over the, over the last budget council, excuse me, the last budget, we attempted to, we miscommunicated. We tried to create a position to fill that role. We have an individual currently doing that role in the fleet maintenance position. We attempted to create a position to fill that role. We did not do that correctly. What we wound up doing was we reclassified a position, which means we, we put somebody in a position to fill that role, but we didn't fill that last, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't create a new position for him. So we're in a, we're in a challenge right now where we have somebody filling that role, and he's doing that job, and will continue to do that job, but we were unable to backfill that, that company officer on the truck. So we will need to add, we will, our, our intent is to add that to the budget request as quickly as possible. We do have an individual who's currently doing that, though.
One of the, the other things that comes to my mind is it seems that lately we've had an awful lot of apartment fires. And I can just imagine that that creates quite a challenge when you have that many. Would you speak to that for?
Yes, ma'am. So since I've been here in Columbus a little over a year now, we have had six major apartment fires, which is unusual for the city of Columbus. We typically have one or two major apartment fires a year. We have had six-
Is it unusual for a city our size?
No, it's unusual for the city of Columbus. For the city of our size, I would say it is not unusual to have three major apartment complex fires a year. To have twice as many of that number, however, is unusual. Several of them were, were natural, you know, the result of Mother Nature. One of the, one or two of them were suspicious, and we, we chased those down as best we could. One or two of them were, had to be, turned out to be electrical in nature. Apartments are more significant because obviously there's a lot more people in there, and a lot of the apartment fires that we're seeing, a lot of these folks don't have insurance. When they lose, the apartment building goes up, they lose everything.
The tenant.
The tenant loses everything. And we have displaced, I, I honestly, I can't give you a number, but we have displaced a significant number of people in our community over the past 12 months. It is a significant drain on our resources, and one of the challenges that we have with apartment fires in our community is a lot of our apartment buildings, some of them are fairly old. We have some of Ms. Woodson's ward that, we had one where the, the fire hydrant is so far removed from where the fire was, we had to relay pump, we had to put a pump in the middle to relay water to where the fire was. In fact, Councilman House was standing next to me when that piece of equipment failed. And it was, it's a tough, it's a tough situation. But to answer your question, yes, we do have a lot of them this year. Obviously, I don't know, I don't have a good answer as to why that is. There's nothing specific I could point to as to why we have more this year over the last year, but we do have a lot of them this year.
And one, one last thing. It seems that I heard on the news this morning that some of our firefighters have gone to Louisiana?
We were, we were poised and ready to go. We had got, over the weekend, we had received indication from the state of Louisiana, that they needed our assistance. We had a team mobilized, ready to go, and at the last minute, the state of Louisiana pulled the request and decided that they did not need us. But we had a team of about 22 persons mobilized, ready to go, using some of our GSR assets that are state assets. That was going to cause a strain on us in terms of staffing, but we, we had enough people that we can manage it. Again, I don't have quite the staffing challenges that PD does, but we did have a team ready to go with, with our GSR assets. Had it been just Columbus assets, I would not have endeavored to send them nearly that far.
I remember when Katrina hit, we had not only some of our firefighters, but some of our police officers who also went to New Orleans to-
Yes, ma'am.
-to help with that. And I, but we did not send anyone this time.
We did not send anyone this time. They just, they decided they did not need our assistance. I will say that particularly in our water rescue side, we have a water rescue team that is one of the only teams in the state of Georgia that has the capabilities that we have with our dive rescue component. So that makes that a very attractive asset for our, our people who need that kind of resource. So it's likely that we will see more requests for those assets in the future, and it's important for us to be able to maintain those assets. But fortunately for us, most of those were provided by the state, and we, we just have to maintain them.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Woodson?
Yes, Mayor, just curiosity, do you have a more or less timeframe when you're going to bring something back to us?
The 14th.
On the 14th? Okay. Because I'm very concerned with equipment figure. That's my biggest thing. I hate for someone to get hurt and then we react after the fact. I prefer us to be proactive.
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's unfortunate. I, I was very thankful that the firefighter who was injured, he received second-degree burns. I mean, nobody wants to get second-degree burns. We're very fortunate that we did not lose an entire company that day. That could have been a lot worse.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for coming today and sharing these challenges with us and just bringing us up to date. I want to thank you and the men and women of Columbus Fire EMS for the wonderful, outstanding job you do for our community and taking care of our citizens. I just kind of looking at this presentation today and, and trying to digest it a little bit, and I keep asking myself the question, you know, it's kind of, you know, we've been talking a lot about some of the concerns and public works that we have and dealing with waste and yard waste and bulk waste type issues, some of the same, reminds me of some of the same problems. I'm hoping that with a lot of the, I guess, in short, the rescue money that's coming, that it's going to take care of a lot of these problems. You know, it looks like there's some money in the budget that's taking care of a few of them, but not enough. But I do question that when that money runs out, what do you do then? But with what, the presentation that you showed us today, I mean, I'm just, it's, it's going to cost a lot of money to, to stay on that schedule. And, you know, it's kind of like, I keep thinking about, you know, sometimes we get in trouble when we shoot at things with a shotgun, you know? We need to be more of a rifle approach and targeted and what exactly we need to deal with. And along those lines, we talk a lot about restructuring and, and at times, you just, there's, there's no other choice. You have no other choice. You just can't keep going down that path because something's going to give, like you're talking about here, and then one of these days, we're going to be confronted where we just won't have the funds to, to deal with some of these issues. So, you know, you, you've got to take a more direct approach at some of these things. I don't, you know, whack-a-mo comes, sometimes comes to my mind when I hear about these matters that we're dealing with as a city, you know, you just keep trying to, you know, deal with all of them, and they just keep popping back up, you know? And somehow, somehow, you're going to have to find a solution for that. I, I have to be frank with you. I, you know, when you're talking about matters like this, you have to, you have to ask yourself some serious questions. And some of the things that was talked about in the presentation today leads me to just ask the, the straight-up question, why are we still in the ambulance business? I just, you know, I'm looking at that, where we've been over the course of time and what we've dealt with, and now where we're at, it's just like, it seems like we're getting right back into that situation again. I had to ask myself that question. You know, you, in the presentation, you brought up a lot of points that I don't know if they're fixable. You're going to continue to, whether it's morale, whether it's the cost, whether it's the challenges you're dealing with on that side, I just don't think there's going to be an easy solution to that anytime soon. So I do question that. One of the things that, that, that I'd like to make a referral, I think that your staff can do this, but, you know, I'd like to understand that equation a little bit better. I think your staff's capable of putting expenditure, a detailed breakdown of the expenditure list, and then on the, and then actually on the revenue side versus the cost of what we have to put in to run the system. Some people would call that an impact study. You know, or, or a, a type of audit, just to understand it a little bit better. But I keep asking myself the question, you know, we're trying to keep something going that we're struggling with, at what cost? And at what cost to the future? At what cost to the department? Should we be looking at other areas and focusing all our resources in that area and maybe coming up with a restructuring and how we could better meet the challenges? Not only today in the long run, because sooner or later, you, you're going to get hit on both sides. You're going to get hit on both sides. The, the inflation, the increasing cost of equipment, not being able to find the, the necessary means to maintain the equipment, and you get caught in that rut. And then on the other side, you've got challenges as well in the private sector that you're trying to deal with, whether it's cost-related, whether it's scheduling or so forth. I thought for a while there, we had a program that was worked out on a scheduling and a cost side. I don't know where that is today, but I just, I keep asking that question, at what cost? And can we keep doing this and maintain it?
Sure, I appreciate that.
And it just, you know, it's, it's, you know, I'm, I'm having a hard time wrestling with that one.
Absolutely. I, thank you for that. And I know you and I have talked a little bit about this in the past, and I can assure you and all of council that once we're able to address this fleet issue, I will be turning my, the majority of my attention to addressing a long-term solution for EMS, and I'll bring the council some options that you can consider. It is a significant challenge. It is different here in this community than it is in most other places in the United States. But I will, I will definitely delve into that impact study, as you call it, put a bunch of, put a bunch of information together. I'll work with our, our finance director, getting some of that cost data for you and be able to share that with you.
That would be great. I just, I hope there's a way that we can maybe work on that aspect of. I mean, when I looked at your presentation, it looked like half or over half of the challenges were in that, were in that area.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, as a council, I'm not going to get involved in micromanaging departments and things like that, I'm just not going to do that. Sometimes we venture over in the area, but it's really not our responsibility. We're not the executive management or the management, and we don't, we don't do that. But we have to ask ourselves these questions because if we can't provide the services or shortfall in the services, or shortfall on the, on the revenue side of being able to provide, not only for one department, but the city as a whole. You know, that's not something that you can just keep pushing off and pushing off and pushing off because it's, eventually it's going to catch up with you. So-
Absolutely.
I'm concerned as a council member for the, you know, for the welfare of our community that we try to stay ahead of these challenges and, and find solutions, and sometimes it's making the tough decisions. But I think, you know, you, you know my thoughts when it comes to some of these, some of these points that you brought up, but I, I mean, I don't, I, I know our city, you know, with the citizens watching, I mean, the only thing I see in this, this pandemic and this COVID environment we're in has kind of exasperated the problems across the board, but you're just going to have to look at new ways of, of getting it done, and that, you know, it-
Absolutely.
I don't see any other way around it.
Yes, thank, I, again, once we address this, I'll turn my full attention to that and bring options for council.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor-
Yes, sir.
May I comment to the question about why we're still in the ambulance?
Yes, sir.
Business and all? And, and I think it's an excellent question, and it has been asked from time to time, and I don't know the answer, but I, I just kind of wanted to share some historical knowledge, and, and it goes back to, and this question has been asked before, and, and I can hear Red McDaniel wanting us not to get out of the ambulance business because of his concern at that time about the quality and level of care that we want to offer to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. And, and, you know, many communities had private care, and, and ambulance care was referred to as meat wagons. And it means, you know, without all the training, without all the technology, the equipment, the meat wagon just rushes out there, and if there's a bad accident, throw you on the gurney and, and, and drive as fast as they can to get you to the hospital. But there were no paramedics. I don't know if there were even EMTs, and we've got some surrounding community where they were referred to, and some of your people know, as meat wagons. And we didn't want meat wagons. We wanted our citizens to receive the highest level and quality of care, and so we were in the ambulance business. We made sure that we had paramedics, we made sure that we had emergency medical technicians on the equipment, we made sure that we had all of the state-of-the-art equipment in our ambulance with the computer technology and AEDs at that time, and just whatever, all of that stuff. And, and then, I don't know if it's true, but then, now, but I, I, I think it was referred to as standard of care areas. And if you ever give up that standard of care territory to the private sector, you can never get it back. I don't know if that's still true today.
It is very difficult to get back, sir.
You cannot get it back. And so it, it's kind of like when you did the nauttorium, you turn it over to private sector, and then if it doesn't go well, you can't get it back. You can't just go ask for it back. But you could in the nauttorium. And so all of that, just the history of it, I think you need to know, was what was considered. You know, we are not giving up our territory to the private sector and, and then can't get it back. And, and I don't think we can regulate or dictate to them that you're going to have the, you're saying, I see your head, you're with me. That's the history that I know. And so when, when you do it, know what you're doing, you don't get it back, and you want our citizens. You all got the technology. You got everything. I don't know that you don't have anything that you can go anywhere else in the country, and they got an ambulance that we don't have in Columbus, Georgia. You turn it over to the private sector and solo and walk away, you can't tell them that you got to have this, you got to have this, and our, our citizens deserve the best. And that's what that was all about.
Well, keeping-
Just the history.
Keep in mind, one of the reasons that we are in the shape we're in is because we had a private ambulance company that we had an agreement with that just sort of left. And, and then the others decided, yeah, we were doing that, but no, we're not going to do that anymore. And, and while I, I, I embrace the idea of looking at privatization for just about everything we have, just to make sure that we're sharpening our pencils and doing the best we can with our resources. I think it's important, I think it's important that we recognize that that stuff happens when you're working with a private vendor, the nauttorium, as you pointed out.
Right.
I mean, that's, it was a lot of promise and under, under-deliver.
Yeah.
And, I mean, you can sue them, but what, what's that going to do? You still have that issue, and now you've divested yourself of all of your, your, your resources and your capital items that make a difference. So I'm not saying we don't look at it. I know the chief and I have talked about this a number of times, and I've asked him about the possibility of privatization, and we've talked it through a number of different fronts, and, and I mean, it always remains an, an option, but it's-
That's right.
I, I think during my conversations with the chief and knowing what the city manager just shared, it, it was not, in my opinion, the best option, so.
And one final comment, if I may, regarding that, Mayor. Even when we brought on the private to supplement what we're doing, we started out with, there was one person who was ill, and they lived at their address, and they called 911. They got the city ambulance, and then, and they went down a particular street and up a particular street and over a particular street to the hospital, and they received a bill for $800. And one week later, they dialed 911, and the private ambulance rolls up. They went down the same street, across to the next street, and down to the street to the hospital, same route. They got a bill for $1,200. And then they called, and they want to know, how can I last week get the ride for 800? And next week, I know that you all know this, it's $1,200. It's because it's, I mean, once you turn it over, you don't control what the private sector will charge. But for citizens, you can keep the rate contained because you're taking care of your citizens. And so it's a matter of- And so, it's a matter of what you want to do for your citizens. And Red McDaniel just was steadfast about it, was not movable. And so, I just wanted you to know the history.
Counselor Davis.
Well, Mr. City Manager, I do know the history, and, you know, I guess we can agree to disagree, but, I mean, when you put the whole facts out, there is another side of the story. And when you look at the, I guess, the industry of EMS, well, let's just say, emergency services that are out there, whether it's private or whether it's public, these are all paramedics. They're all trained. They have to have paramedics as well. A lot of these paramedics are our paramedics that are working for the private carrier. So that needs to be noted as well. But I think the, when you, when you talk about this in a whole, it's not that we're giving up a service, we're just restructuring to find a better way to do it. We have talked many, many times again in our paramedics on the trucks. I think we still need to do that. I think our paramedics do a good job at triaging on the site. Then you start talking about a matter of transportation. Transportation and transport to the hospital is a whole nother issue. That's a whole nother issue. So, who's doing it in the field, you know? Just depending on who they are, I guess you can weigh their level of expertise, but I think they're all trained. I think they all get their paramedic license equally, and they're quite capable of doing the job. As far as some of the conversations we had here not long ago is that we opened up our fire stations to the private carriers, and we dictated the terms. And I still think that's possible. So, I don't know what the, you know, I've heard, I know what all the issues are. There were three major issues over the years. One was a license, one was a cost, and one was the service provided, that we didn't have any carriers that were here. Nobody's talking about giving up a license. I think that, I think it's just a matter of being savvy enough to figure out how to deal with the cost. And then on the service side too, it's just a matter of making it all blend and mesh. But my point is that when you're struggling, you can keep going down this rapid, you can keep going down this path, but one day it's going to, it's going to blow up in your face. I'm just telling you. It's going to be a lot of cost, and I don't know if we've got the resources to make it happen. So you have to ask yourself, do we make the adjustments before we get there? And I think, I mean, that's what I'm hearing today with the presentation. That's all I'm saying.
Well, and I just wanted to share the history. I am absolutely confident that, that that fire chief right there is going to bring you a well-thought-out solution. I'm confident.
And the term meat wagon, there was a time we had no private carriers in Columbus, Georgia. The term meat wagon came from the fire department with the ambulances, and them going, it wasn't the biggest capable trucks.
Well, let me just.
That we could put out on the streets.
And let me be clear.
And when we put the small ones out there on the streets, they were the ones that were getting smashed at the intersection. That's where the term meat wagon.
Yeah, I want to be clear. We were never, it was never referred that we had meat wagons in Columbus, Georgia. We're talking about other communities. I've never known us to be considered.
Well, I've heard that term, and that's the way that I understand it, so.
Yeah.
Because that's not referring to the private carriers as being meat wagons, because they're all in the same industry, and they're all in the same business, and they're under oath, and they have a responsibility.
No, no, I can assure you.
To do their business.
I can assure you, without calling cities, that you had ambulance services that were taking place where they did not have paramedics, they did not have the equipment, and some of them were, the ambulance service, a hearse might go get you for ambulance service.
That may be true.
But not in Columbus, Georgia.
That may be true, but I have to ask the same question, that we have paramedics on all of our ambulances.
Yeah. We do.
Today we do. Today.
All right, Counselor Garrett.
I think I can bring a unique perspective to this, because I think the city manager and I, we actually talked a while back about privatization, and you explained the reasons why. And, I mean, I've had the unfortunate experience of having both a private carrier and a public carrier, and our city ambulances to deal with in the past two years. And I've also met with Chief Scarpa, and I can tell you, I mean, I was all about privatization until my wife had, had, you know, she, she had a scare with COVID and had to be taken, and one of our city ambulances came, and they insisted on taking her. I mean, they, you know, her blood oxygen wasn't horrible, but they insisted on taking her, took great care of her. And I'll also say, I mean, the ambulance bill was very reasonable, and I'm the only person here on the council who can say that with authority that I've got hundreds and hundreds of cases every year as a personal injury attorney, where I see ambulance bills. And we are talking, what the city manager talked about was on the low side. I see from 1,200 up to 3,000. And there's also collusion on the private side where I see on a very, very regular basis, particularly in the Grange area, where an ambulance could make it to Piedmont quicker, they are lifelining car wreck people when they shouldn't be. It's not necessarily a serious injury, but I have serious concerns about the cost. And I can tell you, the ambulance that picked up my wife was fantastic. Could have gone through an intersection, taken a hit. It was built like a tank. It was a city ambulance. And then the, the private ambulance that came out looked like an Amazon delivery truck. It looked like if somebody, if they'd gone through an intersection and they'd been nicked, everybody would have been scattered, they would have been injured. And what really upset me was, about the private ambulance service was, that one actually went for me personally, it was for somebody at church, and there were definite signs of a stroke. I mean, I'd, I'd just had gone through one myself, so I'd seen what had happened. And they let him, basically said he could drive. Columbus Fire and EMS insisted, I mean, with my wife, they said, "We need to make sure you're okay. We need to make sure everything's all right." And I mean, I'm pretty confident, I mean, they took the guy to St. Francis by a personal car, his wife taking, but they were not qualified like our, our folks are. They, it, I don't know what their qualifications were, but they took his pulse. They didn't ask him the questions about whether or not, you know, that would qualify a stroke. It was not the same quality of care. And I mean, I'm saying this from somebody, I was all about privatization if it could save the city money, but from a practical standpoint, it's just not the same quality. Not in the vehicles, not in the price, not in the service. And, I mean, y'all know, I always come to you about privatization for anything. And Chief Scarpa convinced me it wasn't a good idea. And, so, I mean, I, I back up what the city manager says, and I mean, I've got the evidence from my own cases as far as the pricing.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Woodson.
Yes, sir. Not to be redundant, but Chief, I tend to agree with the city manager and with Walker, because I had the same incident years ago, and I was in shock, you know, the price of the private versus the city, and the quality was much better for the city than it was in the private sector. Matter of fact, when that first came, I was very young in council. I even brought it up. I said, "Oh, my God, are we charging people this much money?" And that's when I found out it was actually a private. And I didn't realize that when you call, you never know if you're getting a city ambulance or you're getting a private ambulance, and the cost is different on both, on both entities. So I'm one that, I'm more leaning towards the city than privatizing, but I'm open for any suggestions and anything, but I tend to believe that we have the best men and women who are firefighters and EMTs, and I adore them, and they've been to my house to family and friends and have saved lots of lives and are doing a great job. I'll never forget the time my house burned in 96. They were amazing. They were fantastic. They, not only did they do their job, I kind of passed out, but my husband and my children said how tentative they were to the kids and the family, and that's when they started the fire detectors in the homes. So I'm very supportive. I might be biased when it comes to you guys, but please bring what you need and keep, keep that in mind. Sometimes it's okay to save money, but are you going to sacrifice the quality? And a lot of our citizens, you know, they're barely making it. You know, they're two and three jobs, four jobs, and you're going to have people that when something happens, they're not going to be able to call because they're going to be afraid of that bill, and then something's going to happen to their loved ones, and then they're going to feel guilty because it was too expensive for them to call 911.
Yes, Mayor. I have to give all the credit to our personnel. I say we have world-class service. We, yeah, we're accredited. Yes, we're ISO Class 1, but we've got great people. We've got people who care about this community and care about providing the best service that we possibly can with the resources that we have, and I can, I can attest to that. And the folks behind me are just the tip of the iceberg of that. Counselor Thomas.
As someone who, in the last three months, I've had two ambulance rides, and quite frankly, I didn't care who was coming to get me when I heard that siren. I knew they were on their way, and I was on my way. The, the guys from Station 14, terrific. The private care ambulance folks, terrific. But so many of our citizens don't understand the difference between our city firefighters and the private ambulance, and they don't understand that there's a difference in the, in the price. I just wanted them to get me out of there and get me to the ER, and they did that. And the guys from Station 14 deserve whatever you give them. But I would like to say to Counselor Davis, this does not mean to me that we don't look at this, that we don't look at what would it mean to be, to have, to turn over to a private ambulance. We may not, that may not be what we want to do, but we don't cut that out. We don't cut that option out. But I, as I said, when you hear, when you're lying on the floor and can't move, and you hear the ambulance coming, you don't care who they are, as long as they get there and get there quickly. And I do, I've talked to Chief Scarpa about this, and it's, it's one of those things that you gotta, you've got to put up with, and I appreciate it. And I'm hoping that I don't have to call them again anytime soon, but they're all very professional, and I appreciate the service. Thank you.
I tell our folks all the time, our citizens expect three basic things when you call 911. They want a prompt response, they want a professional response, you have to be able to handle the problem, and they want you to have just a little bit of compassion. It's really what they get, they don't care what name is on the side of the ambulance. If you can provide those three things, and I, and I teach that, I tell that to our folks, and I think we live that. You're right, our citizens, most of our citizens don't know the difference between the two. It's, again, this city is relatively unique across the country in having this kind of structure. It's challenging for our community to understand that. I'm always glad when somebody calls to complain and I find out the ambulance is not ours, I can send that complaint to them. That makes me feel good. You know, it doesn't always happen that way, but, you know, we've got great people. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. One more. Counselor Davis.
Thanks, Mayor. Counselor Thomas, thank you. That's really what I was trying to get to, is, look, I'm in business, I have to ask these questions all the time. If you're not making it work, it's not happening, you've got to ask these questions. And it may be, you know, there may be a little friction there, and people may get uneasy when you ask these questions, but you got to do it. And what I saw today in the presentation, and what I've seen in the past and where we're at, along with what I equate with all the other departments that are having challenges, you know, when I look at the big picture, I'm just like, well, gosh, when the money runs out, when Washington no longer is there to help out, and they're not sending money out to the city, I mean, we got to keep it going. And right now, that's a concern I have, if we're going to be able to meet that challenge, because those trucks are all, those fire trucks are all well over a million dollars, right?
Pretty close.
I mean, and you just made the point that, you know, we got to keep it coming, and they're, you know, hard to get these days, and I imagine all the other cities as well are looking to, to do the same thing. But if that's the case, you know, it's just, it's, you have to ask yourself that question, because I don't know if it's sustainable.
Absolutely.
That's the point I'm making, can we sustain this? And it may be, you may have to do business different. The costs may go up in some areas. You may have to, your quality of care may be changed, but if you have no other choice and you can't sustain it, then, you know, hopefully you've got a plan. So that's all I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
And I think you heard me. You, you, you heard what I, what I asked and what I'm looking for, and I appreciate that. Again, as I started, I think the men and women of Columbus Fire and EMS, I think they're, like I said, I think they're outstanding, they do an outstanding job, and people know that, our citizens love them, and just keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
But I know it's not easy for you and your command staff to come here today and make these presentations. It's not easy for us, and, you know, we've just got to keep trying to find solutions and work through all this stuff and then, and make it work, so, thank you, thank you.
I definitely did not want my first significant presentation at council to be a bad news presentation. My apologies for that. Thanks, sir. No more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next, I'm going to call, I'm going to go out of order and call up our police chief, Freddie Blackman, for a CPD update.
Welcome, Chief.
Good morning. Again, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and city council members, I come before you today to share information regarding a mid-year update. In this presentation, we'll be able to see, have a little bit more of an introspective look as to what takes place or what has taken place thus far within the Columbus Police Department, and we'll look at what we need to do as we go forward. So we'll definitely continue to provide service. Members of my command staff, our sworn officers, and I, we, every day, we work to provide the best possible service that we can provide. We're committed to doing the job where we are able to maintain order as we provide public safety in our community. And we want to always, always make sure that we keep our citizens in our city safe, and that's our very top priority. We respond to 911 calls. That's what we do. We're the first responders, and when individuals on the other side of the phone request a police service, we are going to respond. And we're there to protect lives and property as we go about our enforcement duties each day. And we will definitely proactively patrol our assigned areas as we go forth on the job. In addition to that, we will always focus on our community policing to ensure that we are connected with our community. And we will definitely take pride and remain committed to do our job in a very excellent way as we provide services throughout our community. Our job involves many facets. Some of those are regarding conducting preliminary investigations as it may relate to a criminal related offense or traffic related offense. Our officers, we work to provide the best possible case, putting the case together, conducting interviews, and making the necessary arrest as it applies to the cases we are assigned to as we prepare for court presentation. And so, we are always striving to do the very best job so we make solid cases for our success with prosecution in court. So the objectives today would be to discuss our calls for service, and we would do that in comparison to this point as of July. And we would do that in comparison to this point as of July of 2021. We'll compare January to July 2021 to January to July of 2020. As well as our use of force incidents, we'll look at our recruitment and retention numbers. We'll look at Part I crimes comparison for that same time period, January to July of 2020 compared to January to July of 2021. And then we'll discuss our strategies as we seek to move forward as it relates to crime suppression and also as it relates to recruitment and retention. On this slide, we see that the number of calls that have been dispatched by 911 dispatchers and the number of police-related calls, we see a reduction so far as far as compared to the same timeframe between 2020 and 2021. As we look at the use of force incidents, while we see there were 40 use-of-force incidents for that time period we're talking about, January to July, there was 40 in 2020 compared to one thus far in 2021. That's not to say that the use of force incidents have decreased significantly, but that is to say that our use of force incidents go through an evaluation process where each supervisor along the way, within that chain of command for that officer who used force, we review the use of force documentation to ensure the accuracy of the particular incident that has taken place. So there is not a decrease thus far of this nature, but these reports are continuing through the process. So as they continue through the process, we will be able to see our numbers reflect that. So if I were to give a presentation, once those reports have been reviewed and you see the numbers change, it doesn't mean that all of a sudden there's a significant increase in use of force incidents. It just means that the, the reports are being reviewed. Also, you see, in addition to that, you see the number of arrests associated with the use of force incidents. So you see, based on the arrests that we are making, not too often will the officers have to resort in using force. Sometimes we do, but as the numbers indicate here, it's not very often that officers have to use force in relation to the number of arrests that have been made. And especially when you see the number of calls that our officers have been dispatched And then the types of force that our officers have taken part in. 2020, the, we'll see that the most used option of force is to use a taser. That's an equipment that we consider a forced option that our officers utilize. And it depends on, depends upon the type of incident that's occurring with the officer will face the person that they are encountering. And based on the level of resistance that officer is encountered with, they may use that particular option as being the taser to, to try to apprehend the particular individual that's resisting arrest. And we've noticed over the course of the years, several years, where this taser forced option is the one that has been utilized more so than the other options. Although other options have been utilized over the course of years. And of course, that one that's showing now for 2021 was a taser as well. So we talked about use of force, we talked about calls for service, but now a very interesting topic to consider on our objectives to discuss is our recruitment and retention numbers. As you see on this particular slide, ranging from the beginning of 2020 to the entire year of 2020, the number of applications that have been submitted to the police department have decreased. And as we see, even from January of this year through July of 2021, the number of applications that have been submitted have reduced over the course of the years. So if the applications are reduced, then that gives us a limited pool in which to select from. And we see that in 2020, of the 634 applicants that were submitted, 51 individuals were hired. And that gives indication of the percentage of individuals we hire from the applications we receive. It's not a very high percentage and that's something that trends over the course of the years as far as the number of applicants that we receive versus the hiring percentage. What we also need to take notice of is, and we'll see that trending on another slide that I'll show you, is the number of officers that have actually departed from our department, whether it's through resignation, retirement, or termination. We have more officers leaving our department compared to the number of officers that have been hired. And we see that trending. That was a trend we saw in 2020. And that's, we see that, that trend continuing for 2021. On this slide, we'll see a wider perspective of that going back to 2008 when council granted the police department 100 additional slots based on, at that time, the base realignment enclosure for between Fort Minne and Fort Knox. Those positions were allotted. And you can see on this particular slide that we received applications and the numbers were up as far as the number of applications we were receiving. And we see the numbers that we hire in relation to that. So we received over 5,700 applications. But during that same timeframe from 2008 to, as to July of 2021, 700, a little bit over 700 individuals have been hired from that 5,700 applications submitted. But we also see, as we take notice of the columns regarding resignations or retirement determinations, we see more officers actually departed the department compared to the number that actually were hired during that same timeframe. So we see that trend taking place over the course of time. As a matter of fact, if we look at the year 2008 and the year 2017, those are only two years that we were actually on the plus side regarding hiring and being able to retain our officers. That was 2008 and 2017. We hired more than, more officers than the officers that should left the department. The other years, we were in the negative mode. So based on, as of July of this year, we're budgeting for 488 slots with that 100 additional positions that were allowed in 2008. So 156 positions are vacant. Now, of those 156 positions that are vacant, 24 of those positions are unfunded. And they were, they have been unfunded over the course of the years for various projects that the police department has engaged in. And so, so that leaves around 130-something positions that, that we're actually actively vacant. Of course, that number is fluid. It goes up and down depending upon what's taking place. So now, as we look at our Part I crimes, we'll see that in 2020, we'll see from January through July of 2020, the total Part I crimes was 30, a little bit over 3,700 Part I crimes occurred in our city. And from January to July of this year, we see the increase as far as the number of overall Part I crimes that have taken place. And we also see that the violent crimes have increased as well in our city. And of course, you've heard me say on previous occasions that when we look at violent crimes occurring, we see violent crimes that occur in Columbus and we know that it takes the police department doing their part in addition to an entire community effort, joining together from a multifaceted approach to address violent crimes that have taken place in our community. Here, this slide shows a little bit more of an introspective look as to the increase in percentage-wise in, in Part I crimes. So overall, we are seeing about a 71% increase in violent crimes that have taken place in our community. And that's from comparing January 2020 through July of 2020 to January 2021 to July of 2021. So as we look at this slide, in the next few slides, we'll see how crime is trending, not just in Columbus, the increase of violent crimes, but it's trending in other areas as well. This particular slide will give a little bit more insight on that.
Crime is down. Gun violence and murder rates are up. Guns. The people who in fact are using those weapons are acquiring them illegally. Here's the deal. Cops are having a real trouble. They're not all bad guys. There are a lot of good guys. We need more policemen, not fewer policemen, but we need them involved in community policing.
There is President Biden addressing the epidemic of gun violence gripping America. And this week, ABC News teamed up with our partner stations across the country and end the Gun Violence Archive to track shootings every day this week. Our chief justice correspondent, Pierre Thomas, has been tracking what's driving the surge and what can be done to stop it.
It should have been a celebration, the Bucks winning an NBA championship. gunshots, chaos, people running for their lives.
Where do we go? Where do we go?
Part of the chronic gun violence epidemic surging in recent months. The map shows it all unfolding. More than 1,000 incidents, more than 430 dead, 1,000 wounded in one week.
Three-two. Swing and a miss.
We saw it begin last Saturday.
Eight to four.
As we started our investigation, gunshots outside of Nationals Park. That same night, a mother and her baby caught in the crossfire in a corner store in West Philadelphia, wounding the one-year-old.
I'm tired of this. I'm sick and tired of this.
Day after day, we saw so many children affected by this violence. One boy shot in a bedroom.
The bullet just went through the wall, went through his head.
Tristan Jaden Rosas in San Antonio, Texas, was only 15 and playing video games, hit by a stray bullet.
I should have been there because when you promise a kid that you're gonna protect them, that's a promise that you can never take back.
Altogether an unspeakable toll. More than 39 dead, 94 wounded under age 18. And of the deceased, six children under 12. We also saw mass shootings play out across the country. 18 incidents in 12 communities, including one that senselessly took the life of Corey Saunders and wounded four others.
Mass shootings are up a lot. You know, they went from a 400 base in 2019 to 600, 700.
And sadly, we followed as reports of suspected domestic violence ticked up. At least 44 cases, among them, a mother and child allegedly kidnapped Monday.
A female and her child was abducted and brought out here to Cheney Lake. At Cheney Lake, there was an altercation that occurred.
Virtually no area of the country was immune, but as ABC dug into the numbers, they showed violence disproportionately hit poor and urban areas.
People are afraid to go to malls. People are afraid to go to theaters. People are afraid to, to go to parks.
From Los Angeles to Chicago to New York, where this stunning video caught our attention. Two men, guns drawn in broad daylight.
Are people more brazen, incurring their weapons? Has something shifted?
I don't think there's any doubt, but the data here in New York City is more guns on the scene of shootings, more rounds being fired.
New York City saw a 73% increase in shootings in May 2021 compared to the same time last year. On Tuesday, Commissioner Dermot Shea told us a lethal mix of factors is largely driving the surge. Gang violence, budget cuts, COVID shutting down the courts, leaving a backlog of more than 5,000 gun cases.
Taking the gun off the street is great, but really what we need is, we need the individual carrying the gun off the street.
Increasing gun arrests and targeting repeat offenders has led to some signs of success. A dip in the rate last month. Shea remains unsatisfied.
Who are the victims?
When you look at who's getting shot in this city right now, it's about 97% people of color. It's way off the charts.
For Chief Judith Harrison, the fight is personal.
As an African-American, obviously it was painful to hear that. He said 90% of your victims are people of color.
Yes. Horrifying statistic, but it's not just about statistics. It's not just about people of color. It's about everyone.
Philadelphia facing an even worse explosion.
Been a minute since I've done this.
On Wednesday, Philly police allowing us to ride along. A small number of streets infected with gun violence.
We see this corner store right here. I'm gonna come up personally. There were six people shot. So this is another corner here where we have multiple shootings.
The streets that night quiet until they weren't.
And now there's reports of shots fired in another end of the city.
A shooting outside this restaurant famous for its cheesesteaks.
That's a shell casing right on the ground right there. See where the white circle's drawn around it?
I don't know what it is. You get closer to 2 o'clock, stuff starts popping.
As we waited at the scene, the horrible news.
So he was the guy who was deceased.
The person here died.
Correct.
That's horrible.
Philadelphia Police Commissioner Danielle Outlaw telling us the argument was over a parking space.
A lot of the beefs or social media disputes or whatever they're being resolved with the firearm.
Outlaw acknowledges the challenges of policing in the era of George Floyd and building community trust.
I'm a cop and I'm a black woman. And so because I have all of these lived experiences and these different perspectives, I understand why the police do what we do. But I also understand the hurt and the torment in our communities.
In so many neighborhoods, small numbers of repeat offenders terrorizing overwhelmingly law-abiding citizens.
I said, I'm shot, I'm shot, I'm shot. And then I felt the heat in my league as we're all running away.
This Philly resident shot in the leg this week along with another man standing in front of her home. She did not want to show her face on camera, at times tears filling her eyes.
I shouldn't have to be afraid to stay in my home.
At the end of her sobering week, we're left with the vigils.
Crazy, looking down on us right now.
The lives lost, the families grieving, and the almost certain knowledge that next week it's all but guaranteed to happen again.
And Pierre Thomas. And Pierre Thomas.
Backing up to the Savannah. The previous slide.
Previous slide. Let's see. It's acting up a little bit. Let's see what happens. Let me get out of it. Get back in. I don't know. It's kind of active.
All right, go to the advanced slide.
Okay. Get back to it.
Now on WJCL twenty two morning news, a mass shooting in Savannah. Nine shot, one killed, children among the injured, a neighborhood shut down. And we are going to look live right now at the scene this morning. We have live pictures coming in at this hour. We're gonna get to that in just a moment here. The Savannah Police Department is still sifting through that evidence, trying to find out who was responsible for this shooting. Thanks so much for starting your day with us right here on WJCL News. I'm Emma Hamilton. Officials reacted overnight to the shooting in the heart of the city. Mayor Van Johnson wrote on social media, like so many other cities in the nation, Savannah has been victimized by a mass shooting. He also asked for the community's help with tips and leads using the hashtag say something. The shooting occurred on Avery Street, just off of East Oglethorpe Avenue. You're looking at a map right now. Our reporter Daniel Robinson is live out at that scene right now. Daniel, what are you seeing?
Morning. So far investigators still here on the scene. I am just gonna go ahead and give you a live look here this morning. Like you just mentioned.
We're staying on top of breaking news in another busy overnight from Metro Atlanta Police. We're tracking at least five shootings, four of them turning deadly. Atlanta Police searching for a suspect this morning who they say traded gunfire with an off duty officer in a busy area for nightlife in northeast Atlanta. Christy Diaz, following the latest for us from APD headquarters. Christy, how did this all start?
It started as a fight at a gas station and then spilled out into the street. Let's show you some video from the scene we shot earlier in the night. It was at this Exxon gas station on Edgewood Avenue around eleven thirty at night when some, a group of people got into a fight. It started as an argument and then eventually escalated into physical blows. It moved into the street and around the corner where an APD officer was working an overtime detail. And he was watching as one person started shooting, so that officer fired back. From the scene, we could tell at least nine shots were fired, so it really is incredible that nobody was shot. Everybody had left the scene by the time more officers arrived to investigate, so now they're looking at surveillance video and talking to witnesses to find out more. Shiba.
And Christy, what about the officer that? Now on WJCL twenty two morning news, a ma-
Yeah, it's acting up.
So just go to, go to Chicago? Go to the next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide, please.
Let's try.
Okay, so we had technical difficulties there, of course. We always know technology works good when it works. I was actually here yesterday and went through the entire presentation and it worked. But nonetheless, the point I want to make is that crime is occurring in several different locations. And I know our focus is Columbus and we will maintain a laser focus on what takes place within Columbus. And so for the reasons that I've identified earlier regarding our crime numbers that have taken place, our strategies to address our part one crimes or violent criminal activity that's taking place is to implement our crime suppression unit. So as we look at the beginning of this year, from January, about the first month and a half to about the middle of February, we noticed that we saw a definite or significant increase in violent criminal activities. So we so we merged our special operations unit and our tag reader unit to work together and go to hotspot locations in the effort to identify or target individuals who were taking part in violent criminal behavior. So in these hotspot locations, some would be locations where intranautos cases were taking place. We've noticed a lot of situations where individuals' vehicles are broken into and several of those vehicles are left unlocked and firearms are stolen from these vehicles. And these firearms have been utilized in in other violent criminal activities. And so we, these officers also were receiving intelligence information and went out to make various cases as they were assigned. So since that particular time of implementing that unit, that crime suppression effort, we've noticed that over four hundred individuals have been arrested for for various felony or misdemeanor charges, some involving warrants. And some of those charges were drug related offenses as well. As you can see on this particular slide, four to six firearms were were have been taken off the streets during that particular period of time. And as we look at that first month and a half in which I was referring to before implementing our crime suppression efforts compared to since that time when we implemented our crime suppression efforts, we were averaging like six murders a month and prior to implementing the crime suppression efforts. Since that time, that that rate, the average, has slightly decreased. Of course, we would like to see a situation where there's zero, but nonetheless, there had, there was a slight decrease. There has been a slight decrease in that particular area. And then in in several other areas, we've noticed a decrease. But in some of the areas like aggravated assault, we know there has been an increase as well as in theft by taking a motor vehicle. So so that was our strategy as far as, and that will continue to be our strategy as far as addressing the part one crimes. We we would definitely step up our enforcement into our hotspot locations. Our strategy regarding recruitment would be to continue to advertise through social media and have billboard advertisement and letting individuals know, encouraging them to apply for a position within our police department. We have conducted hiring events and we will continue to work with our partners to conduct hiring events. We've we've partnered with Goodwill. We have continued continued visits at Fort Benning to recruit soldiers from Fort Benning who are transitioning out of the military. Even with our consulting the government, we've had hiring events that we've attended. In addition to that, I do recommend that we consider to put together a a package where we are able to recruit sworn officers. Currently, we may be able to recruit someone who's sworn in the state of Georgia, but that individual will come in with being a brand new officer with our department. We've lost several officers to other law enforcement agencies because they've been given the opportunity to have their years of service counted. And and that reflects in the salary as well. So when we lose officers to other agencies, for example, if that officer has five years with us, they're able to go to the other agency and have that five years of service transfer. And that enables them to be able to receive a salary at that rate as well. So if we were to have the opportunity to recruit individuals in the way from one to five years of service and then have that, have them come with that particular salary, then that would put us in a position where we have the opportunities to recruit experienced officers who will come in and be able to have a salary that's commensurate with their level of experience. In other words, we want to recruit experienced officers in addition to the brand new officers that we are currently recruiting. This saying goes for our military personnel as well. A lot of our military, a lot of our officers who have served in the military have shown to be very mature and they have life experiences and they come to our department and they they do an outstanding job. In addition to that, we want to expand our cadet program. Currently, we have cadets at our police department, but we want to be able to expand our cadet program. We currently have five positions. We want to increase that by twenty positions and have a total of twenty five cadets. That, so we want to build like a form system, so to speak, where we have cadets, we bring aboard and they'll be able to learn the culture and climate of our department. And they'd be able to move through the steps of being a cadet, then with the intention of them graduating to being police officers. So as our cadets learn their internal administrative roles, they will be able to assist in our quartermaster unit. They will continue to help us in other areas of our department, such as in our recruitment unit and our community relations unit and other areas of our department. But the external component is what we want to expand upon is being able to have our cadets be able to assist on the Riverwalk area and where they would, they would not have law enforcement authority, but they will be visible. They will be able to assist our officers by calling in information to our dispatcher or contacting the sworn police officer to address a particular, a particular situation that they may, they may be made aware of. So but they would, the cadet would not actively engage in any criminal activity. They would ride ATVs along the Riverwalk and be visible to provide assistance. And if there is a need to be able to complete any minor report where there is the likelihood of no immediate arrest, they would be able to assist in that area as well. So they would be able to help more with community engagement. In addition to that, they would be able to assist with community engagement in our uptown area where they would be able to help with security checks and be able to interact with the owners in that area as well. And and just be able to provide a visual presence for manpower and help to deter any criminal activity simply by their presence and by their ability to be able to contact nine one one or one of our sworn officers to assist. We've had discussion regarding our parks. These cadets will be able to be assigned to the parks. And again, their presence will serve as a deterrent and they'll be able to ride ATVs and walk through our city parks and be able to report any criminal activity that takes place in those particular areas. And there, of course, they'll be able to make contact with our citizens and and provide assistance where needed. And that that would allow, this would allow our cadets to be able to go to each park within the city. So as I stated earlier, as far as trying to develop that pipeline or or that form system, so to speak, for our cadets, we want to, our cadets start out with a pay grade ten, but we want to be able to put put them in a position where they're able to advance to different pay grades as they proceed towards becoming a police officer. So they'll start at a pay grade ten, but then they they would be able to advance within a matter of six months. Still being a cadet one, but being being able to move to a pay grade eleven. And then after being a cadet for a year, they will be able to graduate to be in the cadet two position where the pay grade twelve. And this will put them in the position where they would be either nineteen or twenty years of age, because they would start out at age eighteen. They would be nineteen or twenty. So if they are twenty years of age, at twenty and a half years of age, they would then be able to make ready to attend the police academy. So this puts in, puts them in the position to be able to have learned some of the ins and outs of our department and what takes place and prepare them to be able to go to the police academy and hopefully be able to get them in a position where they would be more of a mindset to stay with the department and ensure that they are dependable and be able to make a career of being a law enforcement officer. Some of the associated costs with expanding our cadet program will include the uniform cost and the various items that they would need to accompany them with their uniform. In addition to that, we would need equipment for our cadets. And you notice on this particular slide, the equipment that they would have, but then you notice that it's budget neutral. And the reason why it's budget neutral is because I would request the council to to consider to reclassify twenty police officer positions to allow this expansion of the cadet program to take place. So the cadets will come in, as as I stated, as a pay grade ten and proceed through the pay grade steps to page, to a pay rate twelve, and they will come in at thirty thousand dollars. So for retention strategies, I know our council is in the process of working towards a pay study to address compression. And this, this, this salary that's being shown is a salary that would be considered as a pay study and compression takes place. This is what our officers are currently receiving. But in addition to our retention strategies, we we want to look at ways to improve morale because we noticed on exit interviews, our officers have stated that pay is a concern, is the reason why some officers have decided to leave our department. In addition to that, they communicated work hours. So on the twenty first of this month, we went to a new shift schedule for our patrol division to allow officers to have less time, less physical time actually at work, but being able to provide the same quality service while they are at work. So in other words, our officers now will work a ten hour shift and we are assessing this for about a three or four month period to see will this be able to improve morale within our department. As several officers who who have left have stated work hours as being a concern. Previously, prior to this particular schedule, officers were required to work six consecutive days and they communicated that this was taxing on them. And so now they are work four consecutive days before they receive an off day. So working this ten hour shift for four consecutive days is something that we hope that would be able to address some of the morale concerns. The officers were able to select this shift themselves as they were presented with the information. So they they had an option and this is a shift that officers were able to buy into. And they said that they want to try this shift as to see if it would be something that would address our morale issues. In addition to our recruit, excuse my retention strategies, we would like to have an opportunities to an opportunity to reward our officers or pay our officers for their additional responsibilities, such as training. Our officers, our field-trained officers, they receive trainees, but during the time they are training someone, they are that person's direct supervisor, and they have additional responsibilities placed on them to ensure that that officer is trained up in the proper way. If that officer would have received training in the police academy, they would have received training within our training division. But then, when they are actually training on the streets, that's a very different type of training. And that field-training officer is given that task or that responsibility to ensure that that officer receives the training that's required to enable him or her to be able to survive on the streets. And so we would like, as an effort to retain more officers for those field-training officers, as well as the other categories I have listed here, to receive additional pay when they are called upon to train or when our SWAT team is activated or called upon to train, as well as our crisis or hostage negotiators in the bomb techs and our drone operators. We would like for them to be able to receive additional pay when they are called upon to serve their additional roles. Our mission at the police department is to prevent crime and enforce the law. We will definitely work towards strengthening our community and serve through effective communication and transparency throughout our community. We will provide responsive law enforcement, and we are committed to our core values. And we will remain committed to our core values, and as we work towards being able to answer our 911 calls and work towards enforcing laws to reduce Part One crimes or violent crimes from occurring, as we work towards recruiting our officers, we will always stay true to our mission, which is to provide the best possible service to our community. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief? I want to say, Chief Blackman, and for your chiefs out in the audience as well, it's been a trying time for everybody, but I think for your organization and for organizations, your industry, it's been especially challenging. And I just, I've got to take an opportunity to say that you have the gratitude, y'all have the gratitude of the people in this community. Many of us understand, short-staffed, working, going from call to call to call, working in an environment right now where the entire country seems to have lost its sense of decency and humanity, and we're seeing innocents killed by people that have no regard for what happens after a bullet leaves a gun, that have an inability to settle differences. It sickens me. It sickens everybody that has to watch this stuff, and we know what a tremendous effort it takes on your people's part, especially the patrol officers and the investigators as they're out there putting the pieces together to try to catch these folks. I just would implore and beg anybody in the community that has any information, if they see something, say something. I mean, that's the only way this will stop, is if we hold the people that are doing this stuff accountable, lock them away for as long as the law will let us lock them away, and try to make sure that those citizens are partnering with your people so that y'all stay safe and so that we can keep some of these people from becoming repeat offenders. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo the same sentiments and same comments the mayor just stated, but I just want to, just like I think the fire and EMS department, I want to thank the men and women of CPD, and I don't want to even throw the sheriff's office in there, I don't want to miss anybody, but just really appreciate everything that the men and women do for our community, and it's not an easy job, just not an easy job, it's a tough job. And just keep up the good fight, you know? That's all you can do, is just keep fighting the good fight and know that we appreciate you, and I just want to make sure that you carry that back with you and let all the officers know that we really appreciate them under circumstances and where they're at today. I personally, what I wanted, Mayor, I think it was under retention strategies, you know I'm an advocate and a fan of some of these extra duties that our men and women in public safety do, and I'm an advocate for rewarding them in that area, and I would be in full support of that. I hope that we look into that and maybe soon that we can do something in that area. We've talked about it, we've talked about it, but we've never really came up with a structure of how you would, I guess, administer it or across the board, but maybe it's time to do that. But I would be in full support of that, chief, not only in your department, but we've got many other people in public safety that are doing just extra work, they're trained extra, they do extra responsibilities and things like that, and I think it's the only right thing to do is to reward them for that, because it's in addition to what they're already doing, and I think people need to understand that. So, and a lot of times they do it because they believe in the effort, they believe in what they're doing, and they just do it, you know? They do it. And hoping that, I'm hoping that, you know, we can come up with something to help in that area.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. And Chief, I want to echo those words of praise. I appreciate what you all do. You have the hardest job in America, no doubt in my mind, and so I appreciate when you all show up every day and get out there and try to keep us all safe. I do have one question, and I'm not really sure if this is for the mayor or the city manager or you. Since we talked about these special pays, are we going to see you back at some point in time with a budget modification or something to authorize those pays and those reclassifications?
Yeah, you're talking about the sort of hazardous-
Changing several officers' positions to cadets with the pay scale associated and also the special pays, I mean, it's a budget impact or something.
Yes, you will, because we've, our chief and I have talked about the cadet program and the fact that, you know, if a lot of the positions that have not been filled, these actually fill positions because those cadets will stay ideally until they're able to become post-certified. So it's really spending money on those officers. So, yes, you'll get an official request, I'm sure, coming up very soon.
All looks like a good idea, just look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Thomas?
Chief, the positions that you were talking about, the field-training officer and the drone and the, you know, are those voluntary positions? Are they assigned to our officers?
Well, so our officers, they express their interest to share in those particular areas, for example, like field-training officers, they would go to a particular school to be certified to become a field-training officer. They put in for that training, and as they become certified, no one particularly directs them to go there, that's that officer's desire to volunteer to go to that training to train other officers in our department, if I'm answering your question.
Right, I think you are, yeah.
Same thing with our SWAT team. Individuals, they try out for our SWAT team, and as they volunteer to try out to meet the, see if they meet the standards and requirement, and as they meet the standards and the requirements, then they may get an opportunity to be placed on our SWAT team, for example. But these areas that I've shown you, officers, they volunteer to get the additional training to help our department, and we have great men and women in our department that show every day that they're willing to get additional training, and they're willing to run to the danger zone to provide services to the citizens of our community.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions for the chief? Chief, great report. Thank you so much, sir, and thank you all. Chief Deaton, Chief Kennedy?
So the next update on the city manager's agenda is the traffic calming request by Director Donna Newman.
I promise you, I will be brief. Won't take long at all. Let's get started. This is an update, my last update was in October of twenty. And just kind of to bring you up, when I did my update on October twenty twenty, we had received up to eighty requests, and they come in a lot of different forms, requests for speed tables, just requests involving speeding, requests for four-way stops. For some reason, people think a four-way stop will slow cars down when it really doesn't, or a reduction in the speed limit. And to date, since October of twenty twenty, we have received a hundred additional requests. So you can see this is a very common request. What we find out in that, and this is common, and this is based on historical information that we've had for ten-plus years, is generally there's really not a big speeding problem. A lot of it is a perception where a resident may be in their yard and a car goes by at the speed limit or maybe a little above, and they think the cars are speeding, it just feels fast when you're standing there close by. We recently had a traffic study done on Eighth Street, Thirteenth Street, and Seventeenth Avenue. These are corridor studies that we have underway right now. And just for an example, the results of those studies were eighty-fifth percentile was going, on Eighth Street, was going thirty miles an hour, which it was the speed limit they were going. So that means eighty-five percent of the cars were going thirty or lower. So there's really not a speeding problem. There may be one or maybe less than a handful of cars that may have been exceeding that. On Thirteenth Street, which is a major city corridor, eighty-fifth percentile, depending on the direction, was going forty or thirty-seven. So the speed limit there is thirty-five. So they were going just a little bit over the speed limit. On Seventeenth Avenue, the eighty-fifth percentile, the posted speed was thirty, and in one direction they were going thirty-five, in the other direction they were going thirty-three. So again, a large majority of the traffic is going the speed limit or maybe just a few miles an hour over. So that's why we're not rushing out, putting up speed tables that we get requests for. They think that's the magic answer. And I just want to mention, because we do have the corridor studies for Eighth, Thirteenth, and Seventeenth out for public comment right now, so I just wanted to have that included so anybody watching this can go out and comment on these corridors. We do have road safety audits, that's where the consulting engineers, engineering, the city engineering staff, representatives from the community, stakeholders, they literally, we literally go out and walk these corridors, and we have that scheduled for two days in September. And we look at safety, we do look at the cars coming by, whether or not they are truly speeding, we have been receiving input from the neighborhoods, because they live there and they see the different things that are going on, and we look at those concerns that they have as well during this process. Acquisition of tools, we do have in our budget to be able to get some additional counters and software, and so we're in that process. And just so you know, we've talked about the radar signs, we've done some presentations on those, we have ordered fifteen. They've been on order for over three months now, and we've only received three. So again, it's a common thread that you've heard today where you order equipment, order some of these tools, but there's a delay in delivery. And just so you know, with the purchase orders, that's forty-six thousand, right at forty-seven thousand dollars, so it is costly. The plan is to take these signs, they're different type signs, and we'll move them around. One thing that it does allow us to do is collect speed data. So we'll be able to capture the actual speeds in on these streets when we finally get them and get them installed. And then, of course, signing and marking, we make sure there are speed limit signs in the appropriate places, make sure their appropriate marking, striping is clear, that's one thing we've been focused on. My new assistant director was with me earlier, I'm going to bring him back at the next council meeting to introduce you, but this is one thing that he's been focused on since he's been here, is going and riding our streets and looking at the signage and the markings and making sure we have the appropriate ones in place and they're legible. So the recommendations that we have is to complete our purchasing like we've been working on and to move forward with these current studies, the completion of hiring and training of staff, and we are working on that as well. And then in the corridor studies, part of the recommendations the engineers will make will be, based on the results of the studies, the things that we see, they'll make recommendations on, you know, signing, marking. Quite possibly, we could look at other traffic calming, physically, you make physical changes to the intersection, like on Eighth Street, that's in the historic district, well, you have big, wide streets. So there may be some things that we can do there physically, and of course, that's going to take money to do that. And then the other thing that we're trying not to do is to have to go out and do a lot of different traffic studies right now, because traffic patterns are not normal, obviously, with school in one day and out the next, and businesses shutting down, and it's just not the normal traffic that you see. And this is based on, because we still get the request for the speed tables, and so this is just a reminder of what the policy is, is it's not intended for expressways, arteries, and collectors, those are designed to carry traffic and to move traffic, those are designed for public safety, those are the routes they use to respond to calls, be it the fire department, the police department, sheriff's department, they need to get there as fast as they can, so they don't need a bunch of obstructions in the way. Local residential streets, less than seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot, if it's a shorter street, it's really not productive to go out and put a bunch of restrictions out there. Lower-volume streets, of course, we don't do work on private property, and then, again, in industrial, commercial, because you don't have a lot of trucks. So this is what we do consider for traffic calming. But the thing you have to be cautious with is if we put in a physical obstruction, like when we use speed tables, it just shifts that traffic to another street, and you have a similar issue that happens there. To implement a full traffic calming program like we had previously, this is what additional staffing we would need. It's really a full-time job. If you look at the number that we received, and there would be no way to do all of those in a year's time, but this is the number of people that would be involved in that process. So this would be additional staffing from what we have today. And then, of course, we always want to get the community involved. And so this is just a picture of some of the traffic calming measures, roundabouts for traffic calming measures, narrowing in the intersections, so one, that's safety for pedestrians, and two, it slows the cars down at the intersections, and then, of course, the different types of radar signs that you see. That's it. Any questions, comments?
Yes, the mayor pro tem has one.
Thank you, Mayor. The questions that come to us from the constituents wanting traffic calming device, the procedure is we notify you and then you perform the test that you just went over on that street to see if it meets the standard.
Correct.
That is right. Okay, and then you have to have a survey, is there a petition involved, or eighty-five percent of the folks have to sign in or agree?
The petition was involved when we were doing speed tables, because what we found when we were doing the speed tables is it would only be a handful of the residents that actually wanted the speed tables, and they were speaking for the rest of the neighborhoods. But when you did a petition, a lot of times you found out that a majority of the neighborhood really didn't want them. It was just generally, some of the residents may be somewhere in the middle where the cars are going the fastest or the most impacted, where everybody comes by their house, where people that live further into the subdivision that weren't really impacted, they weren't interested, or they didn't want to drive across them every day, going and coming or anytime they left. anytime they left. So, um, that's what that petition process was for, was making sure that it was truly wanted by a majority of the neighborhood.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Any other questions? I think that's it. Donna, thank you.
Thank you.
The, the final update on the city manager's agenda today is the Q Alert, which is the Columbus 311, um, work order, uh, system, and that will be done by Tiaja Johnson.
Hello, I promise you, I'm going to be very quick and brief. Um, Q Alert. Q Alert was implemented last year, March 11, 2020. During this time last year, we invited the mayor, city managers, deputy city managers, the council members, as well as media, as well as the media. The app is called Columbus 311, uh, which can be downloaded on your Google Play Store. Um, I get a lot of questions several times about what exactly is Columbus 311, what does it involve? By downloading the Columbus 311 app, citizens are able to submit a service request, um, get, um, access to the civic ready system, which is our emergency notification system, they can view the council agenda, live stream the council agenda, view the, um, upcoming career opportunities, and also the upcoming civic center events. So when citizens download the Columbus 311 app, the main focus really is to make sure that they're able to be able to submit a service request. One of the main features, um, that I particularly like of, of this system is it gives, um, several different types of reporting. So, um, there are all kind of custom reports that was already implemented with the system, but if anyone would like to have a certain type of report for their district, they're always able to contact myself as well as IT and we can generate that report. On this particular report, if you look down at the bottom of the, the screen, lists all the open requests for Q Alert. As you can see, it compares the year from 2020, from when we started, to current 2021. So let's take a look at the month of April. For, for the month of April in 2020, we submitted 3,480 service requests in the system. This April 2021, we submitted 6,950 service requests. So we almost doubled our service requests within a year. May, 2020, we did 3,586 service requests. This May 2021, we inputted 8,406 service requests. So as the years go on, we will see how many service requests are we entering into the system and we can compare it from year to year, date to date. Another reporting aspect of the system that I particularly like is as far as how are we receiving calls? What is the number one we receive calls? As you know, mo- majority of the citizens call 311 to report this issue. Um, they, they can call into 311, they can email 311, they can download the app and input the information, as well as do it online at a ColumbusGA.org website. The last slide I have lists is our report for FY21, as far as how many calls we receive. Everyone should have this report, um, it was listed in your brochure that you have. So for FY21, 311 took in 1,606, 1, 164,000 calls, 464 calls came in through the 311 center, and we submitted 71,000 work order requests. Mike King has a short video on exactly how does the Q Alert system work.
Oh, no, wait a minute. I gotta, I gotta bring it back up. Hang on. Let's see. Hang on, hang on, hang on.
And it'll be one second. While we wait, is there any questions on the Columbus 311 app, how to download the app or any general information you may need? Yes?
I haven't.
You haven't? Okay. I also left a flyer on your desk, and on the flyer is a QR code that you could just select, and a QR code will be able to download the app as well.
I'll get it in a second. There it is.
So basically with the app, um, one of the best features of the app is, of course, is submitting a service request. So when citizens are able to submit a service request, um, they need to make sure they put their location or wherever the, the location is, exactly put what's taking place in the comments, and if they choose to, um, take a picture, they're able to take a picture and upload that into the system. Once you hit submit, it goes directly to the department. It does not come to 311, it goes directly to the department who handles that request. Um, in the event that a citizen may hit other, then that other request will come to 311 and we'll see exactly what's going on and what department needs to handle that request. So, um, just make sure you have your information, your contact information, what is the concern, your, um, your comments you may want to input and hit submit, and it goes directly to that department for handling. Any questions?
Yes, Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. I love the app, I use it all the time.
Thank you.
Um, one thing that I've noticed about it, it, it might be not as user-friendly for people that don't understand the departments and, you know, you have, it has that really long list that you have to go through. And so if we could kind of clean that up, maybe do icons or something else, I don't, I'm not quite sure what I'm asking you to do, but I, I do notice that sometimes it, when I'm putting in a request, I'm thinking, well, where, where exactly would this request go?
Right. We will look into that, but a lot of times when citizens are not sure exactly who handled the request, majority of the time they'll either put in a field general questions or other, and then it's directly, directly, that is directed to 311, and we're able to pull the request and direct it to wherever department needs to go to. Um, but we'll look at icons, and I know it's a long list because we handle a lot of things.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Did a good job, that's the only question. And that was really a suggestion, not a question. All right?
So that concludes the city manager's agenda.
Okay. We, um, we have lost our quorum, so what we'll do is we'll go through the clerk's agenda, we cannot vote, nor can we close the meeting, so we will, when we reconvene on the 14th, the first order of business will be to close this meeting. So we will, excuse, adjourn the meeting, I can close it. All right, uh, Madam Clerk?
Do you want me to, uh, make reference to each one or just, uh, bring these items back for the September 14th meeting?
However you want to do it, I mean, if you want to just go over-
Since I have a very light agenda, I could just bring it back-
Okay.
-at the September 14th meeting for vote.
All right, we'll do that. Mr. Attorney?
If you're through with the clerk's agenda, a motion to adjourn is always in order so you can take one from the floor, even though it's not an official vote.
Okay, so, where's the motion, a second to adjourn, do we have the vote? We can't, we can't vote.
We can't have that today, we'll talk about that before next time.
All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? We're in conclusion.